The school board work session begins in two minutes. Please take your seats. Again, the school board work session begins in two minutes. The school board work session begins in one minute. Please take your seats. Again, the school board work session begins in one minute.
Good morning. I now call the March 23rd, 2023 Administrative Briefing and Work Session to Order of the Marion County School Board at nine o'clock a.m. Please silence your electronic devices to avoid disturbing others. Before we get into the core of the work session today, I would like to ask that we pause for a brief moment of silence in memory of a teacher that we lost this week in a very unexpected way. Mr. John Gibb of Lake Weir High School was a recent Golden Apple Teacher of the Year nominee, and we all had the opportunity to see him and see him in action and how amazing of an educator he was. And I know the Lake Weir community is suffering as we all are. So if you'll just join me for a moment of silence, please, in his memory. Thank you. So at this time, I will ask the school board attorney to explain the rules for this morning's work session. Good morning, Attorney Powers.
Thank you, Chair Campbell. This work session is a public meeting as defined in Florida's Sunshine Law. This board is dedicated to full transparency in its meetings and its work. In compliance with Sunshine Law, the board has adopted uniform meeting procedures, including the right for citizens to participate. The board will allow public comment regarding any work session item listed on today's agenda at the appropriate time. Speakers must fill out a request form located in the lobby and hand it to the board clerk. After the board and superintendent have completed their discussions on a particular agenda item, the board clerk will call speakers' names in the order received. Each speaker will have three minutes. As required by the Sunshine Law, the board must maintain orderly conduct and proper decorum throughout this meeting. Speakers may criticize subject matter and decisions in a respectful manner, but not people. Finally, speakers have, must be very careful not to violate the privacy rights of others, especially students and their family members, by mentioning their names or other identifying information. Thank you for your attention to these important rules.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. We'll now begin the work session with the superintendent's administrative briefing. Good morning, Dr. Gullett.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Nice to see you today. Pardon me, the allergies are not any better today than yesterday. First item I would like to request, Madam Chair, is that we move item 6.1, the annual reports by the charter schools, up after 3.1, which is the external auditor's report. We have a number of guests with us this morning, so if we could make that change, I would appreciate that. And the other item I have to share with the board is a reminder that this Saturday, we have our parent partnership at North Marion High. And followed by that, we have the elementary Marion County Public Schools Youth and Art Reception at Appleton, and then the afternoon at two o'clock is the secondary. So we are very appreciative of Ms. Crowder's work and everything she does to support the arts and our team who supports the family engagement in our community. So, and then finally, thank you for recognizing, Mr. Gibb. He was a very beloved member of our team and very heavy hearts. What a loss for our students and our, in our school community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Yes, I definitely agree with making that adjustment to the agenda today. And since you mentioned parent partnership, I also want to mention a friend of mine that passed recently who was at the most recent parent partnership. John Podkamorsky was an executive director of the National Alliance of Mental Illness here in Marion County, and he also passed away on the same day Mr. Gibb did. So he was at our parent partnership event at Bellevue High School representing NAMI. So it's been an interesting week, definitely some solemn occasions, but here we are and doing what's best for students every day. So with that, I believe we're at Agenda 3.1, Agenda Item 3.1.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And Ms. Boston Ellis will come forward and introduce our guests here to discuss the external auditor's report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Chair Campbell, Vice Chair Throer, Board Members, Dr. James, Mrs. Conrad, and Revan Cummings, Superintendent Gullett, Attorney Powers, and Mrs. Martinez Lopez. Good morning. The first item on the agenda today is a presentation by our external auditors, Purvis Gray CPA Firm. They will present the audit results for the year ended June 30, 2022. This presentation will be provided by Mr. Tim Westgate, who is a partner with the firm, and also Allison Stone, who is the auditor, the audit director. I also want to thank them for working through last fiscal year with us. We had a brand-new leadership staff, which most of you are aware of, and I want to give a shout out to our very own Terry Cook, who has not made quite one year, but has done amazing work in getting us in the position where we need to be. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Westgate and Mrs. Stone. Thank you.
Thank you.
And also, there is the annual comprehensive financial report. We'll put it in your boxes today for your reading edification.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good morning. Good morning, Madam Chair, Board Members. Thank you for the opportunity to present this morning. We have a few things to review with you that the audit standards request, that when the auditors meet with those charged with governance, is the term they use, in this case, yourselves, a few items that they require or request that we discuss with you. So some of this is not the most exciting. However, I do want to preface that it is, you know, all good news. Ms. Boston Ellis mentioned the transitions following retirements and changes. That is an opportunity for a lot of mistakes to happen and a lot of findings to occur and transitions. We're very pleased to say, I'll preface it, that everything went smoothly and ended up with clean reports. So we're presenting today the final results, as mentioned, for the June 30th, '22. Our reports were dated back in December. Had there been significant issues that we needed to communicate with you, we would have met much sooner. So today is an opportunity. If you have any questions, otherwise the excitement of listening to the results of our report. The report that is issued and the annual comprehensive financial report that is submitted meets your external financial reporting requirements that fall under Florida statutes, DOE, your secondary bond markets, federal award programs that you participate in, as well as the GFOA, that's the Government Finance Officers Association, issues a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting to those governments that go above and beyond just the standards that are out there, and they submit for the program to receive the award. Marion County Public Schools has received it for many years, and we anticipate you will receive it again once this has gone through that review process. Main thing that you want to hear from your auditors is the audit opinion. So at the very beginning of the report, there's an auditor's report that talks about management's responsibility, management being responsible for the financial statements, responsible for financial reporting and internal control. Our responsibility is to issue an opinion on those financial statements, and we're very pleased to say we issued a unmodified opinion, that is, a clean opinion, the highest level of assurance that you can receive on audited financial statements. So that is great news, happy to report that. Several other reports that are in there are summarized on this next slide. As part of the audit, under government auditing standards, we look at internal control and compliance and related matters as they relate to financial reporting. This would be the location where we would report material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, items like that, that came up in our audit. We're pleased to say it is a very boring standard report. There is nothing exciting in it. It is all the standard language, because there were no such findings. Another report is required by Florida statutes related to investment of surplus funds, and that report does indicate that Marion County did comply with the requirements under Florida statute for investment of those funds. And the final report is the management letter that is issued under Rules of the Auditor General, Section 10-800, and that one addresses prior year audit findings, which there were none in that regard. It also talks about matters if there were issues of deteriorating financial condition, you weren't able to pay bills, make bond or debt payments, if there were contracts and noncompliance that weren't material. That letter would address all of that. Again, we're pleased to say, standard language report that repeatedly says there were no such findings under those various categories. So, great news in that regard. As part of our audit, we also perform a federal single audit. The district receives significant federal awards, federal programs that come down, but of course, all of that comes with extra strings attached, extra compliance requirements. And under the money that came through the CARES program, the COVID program and funding, the guidance followed the money at a much later date. So there was a big exercise by school districts and all governments, all entities, to receive the money, do their best in spending it as the compliance requirements were continually changing. We're pleased to say, looking at the Emergency Connectivity Grant, COVID-19 ESRS grant, special education programs were the significant, the major programs that were reviewed, and we did not report any material weaknesses and deemed that the school district did comply with those compliance requirements. So, again, great job in that regard. Next slide, the standards want us to talk with you about some of the significant estimates that go in your financial statements. Net pension liability is information received from Florida Retirement Services for your participation in FRS. OPEB information, other post-employment benefits comes from actuarial reports. You have a self-insurance program, similar estimates that are in there. It's really just to keep you aware that there's a lot, besides actual checks written, cash received, there's a lot of estimates that go into your financial statements. We agreed with the assumptions and the presentation that the district used for their financial statements. Other audit matters to talk about, there was a new accounting standard, GASB 87, reporting for leases, and we reviewed that with management. They went through the exercise of reviewing all of their leases. While ultimately, it didn't end up recording anything in the financial statements, that didn't mean it was an easy exercise for the district to go through. There is a new standard related to subscription-based IT arrangements in the new year, so there's a lot happening out there in financial reporting, but we're confident that the district will stay up with that. Jumping down to the last line on this slide, difficulties encountered in performing the audit. We're pleased to say, we did not encounter any significant difficulties in that regard, and want to take this opportunity to thank Ms. Cook, Ms. Boston Ellis, the finance department particularly, who has to put up with the most when we show up for the audit, saying, "Show us this, show us that." We appreciate everybody's cooperation. Dr. Gullett, from the top down, we received great cooperation throughout the audit process. So I want to thank you with that, and I invite any questions that you may have related to the audit.
Thank you so much, Mr. Westgate. Board, any questions about the external audit report? Vice Chair Throer.
Thank you. I don't have any specific questions. I do have a lot of appreciation to share. This was, it's been a very difficult and challenging past year, and we have experienced turnover, just like every other district. And I was really worried with the amount of money that we had flowing in, which is great, but keeping track of all that is a huge challenge. So I'd really like to just extend my appreciation and gratitude to Ms. Boston Ellis and her team, and including Ms. Cook, Mr. Westgate, Ms. Stone. You guys are just great partners. An organization of our size, to be able to proudly share what you just said is a testament to the hard work and the passion and commitment that all of you have for Marion County Public Schools and by extension, our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Any other comments?
I just second everything, Ms. Throer. She summed it up really well. Ms. Boston Ellis's department, they all do a tremendous job, so thank you.
Absolutely, yes. Thank you so much to the finance team and all those hard workers over there that we often don't see, but Ms. Boston Ellis and Ms. Cook, as representatives of that team. The best audit that you can ever hear is no findings. And so, as I kept reading, "No findings, no findings," I'm like, that's exactly what we want to hear anytime we have an audit. So, Board, if you don't have any additional comments, we're very grateful for you all coming. Is there any public comment about our audit report? Seeing and hearing none. Thank you so much, Mr. Westgate and Ms. Stone, for coming, and we hope that we will have no findings again the next time we see you as well.
Thank you.
Have a great rest of the day.
Have a good morning.
Thank you.
Looking forward to a whole lot of nothing.
I know. We're looking forward to a whole lot of nothing, as Vice Chair Throer says. With that, Dr. Gullett, I believe we're at item 6.1 that we've now moved up in the agenda.
We are. Thank you, Madam Chair. And Mr. Ayers is making his way forward. Mr. Stephen Ayers, who was going to introduce at a high level, this is our annual report from our charter schools, you're going to get to hear from, from their representatives. So, thank you, Mr. Ayers.
Good morning, Board Chair, Madam Chair, Board Members, Dr. Gullett, Attorney Powers, Ms. Martinez Lopez. We're here today to do the annual report for charter schools, which is statutorily required for the charter schools to make a report annually to the sponsor. And so, we have our four charter schools here today to do that. Up first is Marion Charter School. Ms. Axum, who's the principal, there's a situation on campus. Unfortunately, she was unable to leave campus, so we have another administrator, Ms. Hyderbin, who will do the presentation for Marion Charter School. So if we could, I believe they have a PowerPoint. In your board packet, you do have a copy of all the presentations, as well as the demographics report for each school.
As Mr. Ayers just said, I am suddenly here, so forgive me if I'm a little nervous.
Deep breaths. Welcome.
Good morning to everybody. I am Allison Heinemann. I'm from Marion Charter School. I've been at this school for 16 years, so I am very familiar with our school. I am on the administrative team at this time, so hopefully I can answer any questions that Normally, I'm the PowerPoint girl, in case anybody recognizes me from years past. Okay, so our mission is for every child to be able to embrace their own uniqueness and the uniqueness of others, and for them to become respectful, good citizens, to be part of their community, and to put that love of learning that we all have in them so they can just, for a lifetime, investigate, continue to grow who they are. I'm going to have to remember to do better. Okay, everything here has stayed the same. We have 14 instructional units, 15 non-instructs. All 14 have their professional certification, and all the teachers are in field. You can see our salaries vary, and we have health insurance, and we're part of the Florida We have a total enrollment of 218, and 100% for free and reduced lunch, and yes, we get Title I money. Last year, we were asked about the diversity at our school, so we included just information on that for the different grade levels. And you can see that we have a lot of diversity at our school. We are a very diverse school. And I love it, our school is representative of the community that we're in, you know, like everybody's neighbors, and, you know, the families know each other and care about each other, and I just feel like it's, it's a, I mean, a representative of our community. There's two pages on there, I'm sorry. Our buildings have stayed the same. We have one campus, we have two portable buildings, 13 classrooms, and one office. And this is my mistake, I didn't, I wanted to check on and make sure when exactly the property was paid off, and then I didn't put it back in the PowerPoint. So that would have been March of 2019. Yes, you know, we've been looking forward to building a new building, but of course, we had a pandemic, so we paid off in 19, and then, you know, the last few years have been, you know, not very secure to decide, let's do this big jump. So we are still planning on doing that. The financial situation is in the positive and is looking good. You can see the numbers. I don't necessarily want to read them all to you. I'm sure you can see them. The instructional delivery method, one of the things that I think we've done really well at our school is we implemented a morning block specifically for interventions, enrichment, and it has worked out really well. It ensures that the intensive interventions are being done, done well, enough time, and it has worked out really well. We have, you know, the interventions are done by reading-endorsed teachers. The students can change teacher to be in whatever level group they need to be in so that they're making progress. So that has, I think, been a really good thing that we've done. And we also, you know, we ran a couple of reading camps, and we have some teachers that tutor after school. So we've been, you know, trying to do a lot to, to make some moves here, which I can bring up. So the result of that is, we are a B school. Happy to report that. After the pandemic and the learning loss and everything, the kind of, everybody scrapped their way back up, we're doing well, we're comparative with the county, and we are a B, so that's, I'm happy to report that. Our goals are to continue to close learning gaps, and we're going to do that by continuing that block that I said that we started at the beginning of the day. And again, we have teachers tutoring, and, you know, specifically, our reading, our reading grades, we're trying to get up. And, it's, so in achieving these goals, we are keeping that block in the morning. We are also continuing to do the STEAM activities. I feel like they've been very beneficial for the kids because, you know, knowing what this is in real life, like what are they doing in real life? How does this pertain to real life, not just being sent to school day after day? And I did an activity with some students yesterday, and they were like, "Why does the time always go by so fast when we do this?" And it's, you know, they were just so engaged that, you know, so we're going to continue the STEAM. We also have continued doing the I-Ready assessments because it's good at breaking it down exactly, you know, where students have difficulty. And then, I just included some pictures at the end here. Some of the STEAM activities are included in here. Our fifth-grade teacher, he, they do rockets every year in fifth grade, and they really look forward to that. It's a great activity. And they enjoy working outside when you're doing those activities. They like being outside, and, so, a few more of the rockets. Oh, a little video. You can't really hear it, but they're all shouting with excitement, "Ah!" You know, every bottle rocket that goes off, "Ah!" They're all excited. And some different lab activities, because we were also trying to work on the scientific process. Seems to be the struggle area in science, so, you know, the scientific method. And this is our kindergarten. We also, as I was saying, we like to be involved in the community and teach the kids to be part of their community, what can they do for the community. And you can do a lot, even though you're a child, don't worry about it, everybody can do something for their community. So we do different fundraisers, and so, you know, one of them is the Jump rope for Heart, and so, and the kids love that. And every year, we set the goal higher and higher. This was an Egypt project, mummified apples. Some more kindergarten. I love that face, he's just smiling so big. We also put students together for reading, so like, third grade might be paired up with kindergarten, and the third graders read to kindergarten, et cetera. So we have times where the older students can kind of role model and mentor for the younger students in reading. And that should be the end. I don't know if that just puts them all there, or there shouldn't be anything else there on. on the PowerPoint, so I don't know why that is there. Do you have any questions?
Thank you very much for pinch-hitting, I guess you could say, Ms. Heineman. You did a wonderful job. But, board, do we have any questions for Ms. Heineman today about Marion Charter School? Dr. James?
I just wanted to say, I, one of the things that I do regularly is look at our attendance report. We get emailed every day, and I want to pride you guys on your attendance. Just yesterday, the report that we got showed you guys, I think we're at like 96 or 97% attendance. So, in today's day, that is beating the district, and you're doing a wonderful job with that. So, I'm proud of the things you guys are doing.
I would have to give credit to Ms. Wells for that. She promotes the attendance, and that we have like, if you're here on time every day, and so, they give a little reward every day if you were here on time.
Wow.
So, kids get called down for their reward for being here and being on time, so...
Wonderful. And that speaks to the family's involvement in their education as well, because kiddos can't drive themselves to school.
Right.
So, it definitely speaks to your families and their commitment to the educational experience at the school.
Yes.
So, congratulations, you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Reverend Cummings?
Very good, very good report, presentation. Thank you for doing that and stepping in on a short notice.
Sorry if I was rushing and kind of just moving along.
You did a good job.
I probably skipped some stuff as well, but...
Question. So, every kid that attends there does get some type of remediation every morning? Is that what I heard?
Well, or enrichment, which, whatever each child needs. So, if they need interventions, then they are receiving interventions. If they need enrichment, then they're receiving enrichment. And we do that in the morning, a specific block, to make sure that everybody is getting what they need. So, you know, they would be in different groups, whichever teacher they need to be with, whatever level they need to be, you know, like I said, you know, from intense remediation to enrichment during that block.
Do you have any kids there that have, like, current IEPs?
Yes. Yes, we do.
Thank you.
Yeah. Do you need any more information on that?
No, ma'am.
No? Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Miss Conrad?
Oh, real quick. I just wanted to tell you also, congratulations with your attendance, because we are watching it each day, and 96% is so great. And I think, when you look at your remediation and enrichment that you have first thing in the morning, what a positive impact, because those kids are really getting what they need. I did have a question on your tardies. Do you have the same success as your kids coming in on time?
To answer that specifically, you know...
Just in general, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I'm just curious.
In general, I feel like it is really good. Our tardies, I think, are more, you know, kind of the typical family hectic morning, not missing a lot of the morning, you know? It's not a late tardy. It's a, you know, we're a family. We had a busy morning, and we're a few minutes late, you know? So, that, from what I've observed, is generally our tardies is rushing in there at the last second, and, ah, you know, and we had hectic morning, so...
Okay.
I don't know of any, like, late tardies that are, you know, regular. You know, those are more like dentist appointment, et cetera, those type of things.
Okay. I had another question. On one of your slides, the kids were doing sign language. Is that part of your regular curriculum, or was that a special event? It looked like it might have been a graduation or something, but do they do that as part of their regular curriculum?
They don't do it as part of the regular curriculum. I have taught some of my kids, so, you know, you try to reach out to them when you are teaching language, whether, you know, with reading, you know, you're trying to reach out in different ways, and, you know, including other languages, and basically, communication in general, you need to be able to effectively communicate. And so, I just, I included that, because, well, my mother, she passed away last year, but she was blind, and so, we talked about Braille, we talked about sign language, you know, we need to make it possible for everybody to be able to communicate their ideas. And so, it was just to encourage them to have an open mind.
Thank you.
Yep.
Vice Chair.
Sure, I'll just try to keep this short. What a nice presentation.
Thank you.
And we love Ms. Axon, Principal Axon. She does a great job. There was a little nice twist to having a teacher present today. And did you design the PowerPoint?
I did.
I could tell. I love the clipart and the effects and the flying in and the crumble. It was very engaging.
I tried to keep it a little more mellow than I did in the pandemic. I kind of had a wild one going on there, you know? So, I tried to tame it back a little bit, but, you know, it's still fun to, you know, keep, and this is one of the things we, I work with the students on presentation, you want to keep their attention, or they're not listening to what your ideas are. So, you know, little things to keep your attention.
Absolutely. So, I was 100% all-in and engaged.
Awesome.
Really enjoyed it, and I'm so glad to have Marion Charter as a public school partner, because you have continued to represent us really well over the years, and to have a charter school that has all-infield professionally-certified teachers and reading-endorsed teachers, we, gosh, if we had that at each and every school, what a difference it makes. And you have a great team out there that has stayed, and...
Yes, a lot of people, a lot of the teachers have stayed a long time, and I think that makes a difference. A lot of the teachers, like even Mrs. Axon, the principal, she was, I think, the year after the school opened, and several others have been there longer than me, a year or two longer than me, and I've been there 16 years. So, it's a great place to work, and...
That's so good to hear. That's really good to hear. That was a word that I wrote down, too, was stability. You know, you guys are academically and fiscally stable, and your staff is stable, and you're just quietly out there getting a lot of really cool things done, so, thank you.
I feel like the staff, we have, I always tell them, teachers have just as much room for growth as the students. They, you know, and that's the wonderful thing about this, is you will never conquer it. You will never be the best at this, like, you just can't do it, because there's always room for improvement, and every single year, a whole new set of challenges walks through that door, and you are trying to get to know each one of those and what each one needs, and it's, you know, it's very challenging, and so, that's my belief, that the staff is just as invested in growing themselves as they are in helping the students grow, so, thank you.
That's amazing. Thank you so much for this wonderful presentation. I love Marion Charter School. I love that little school. And I also appreciate the demographic information. I know that may be a little different than what we have, I know, questions came out last year. So, seeing it, and seeing that you do have 15% with ESE and 8% that are English language learners, and then 4% that are gifted, you really are kind of a mirror, and obviously the racial demographics as well, but you really are a mirror kind of of our community, and you are serving all student needs in multiple different ways, and that's a testament to the wonderful work that you all have been doing for such a long time. So, kudos on that B. That's also a good, and I know that you're probably striving, obviously, for that A, and with the processes you have in place, it seems like that that definitely is in sight and a possibility for you.
Yeah, we're definitely, we always teach the kids, you have to aim way up here, you know, beyond where you can even, we're going beyond an A, so that we can...
Absolutely. And my favorite thing you said is effective communication. That's right up my alley anyway. My, as the board knows, my sister's developmentally and intellectually disabled, and she's non-verbal. And when a teacher taught her to clap her hands to mean yes, that's effective communication for my family. So, if we can teach all students, that every student deserves a way to effectively communicate, and you're certainly doing that in your classroom and in your school. So, thank you very much. We appreciate your presentation today.
Thank you.
I believe Mr. Ayers, I think...
I don't want to move yet, because before, I started walking away.
No, no, I think, I think we're moving on to the next presentation.
All right. I just want to tell you also, you know, you're always invited out to Marion Charter School. You know, come on out and visit us and see what we do.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
All right. Next up is Marion Charter School, and Mr. David Friedlander is the principal.
McIntosh?
McIntosh.
McIntosh. McIntosh Charter School. Mr. David Friedlander is the principal, and he brought his assistant principal with him, and also his board chair is here.
Good morning, Dr. Goad, school board members. Yes, we are McIntosh Area Charter, Area School. And as already mentioned, I'd like to introduce our assistant principal and our curriculum coordinator, Mrs. Colleen Beals, and also our board president is Deb McKay. She's also here to support us. We appreciate the opportunity to present our annual update for McIntosh Area School, and have identified three main areas I'll be focused on over the course of the next four years. And these areas are academic rigor, school finances, recruitment, and marketing. We're going to go right into the academic rigor, and I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Beals, who's going to present on this topic.
All right. So, since the MCPS team visited our school in January, academic rigor has maintained a priority for MAS, to ensure our students are provided an enriching collaborative learning experience that requires them to be challenged based on their individual abilities and needs. With this in consideration, MAS had already set their school improvement goals for their student body to achieve the equivalent of a school grade of a B. As we review the progress of our students working towards these goals, we can clearly identify academic gains school-wide so far. These gains are a direct result of schedule changes, departmentalization, and co-teaching structures and strategies that we implemented on campus since that visit. And we are also very pleased to state that teachers and students are really enjoying the changes that we had implemented, and we've seen positive changes as a result in our student behaviors as well. Our kindergarten and first grade continue to remain strong, and now, we're seeing this in our grades two to five, with data tracked through our progress learning platform. And the platform is indicating an upward trend at a positive rate of student proficiency, increasing greater than 46% in a single-tested domain in as little as a three-weeks timeframe. As they continue to work within our new model, students have their domains scaffold to continue strengthening their skills. Their first goal that we had originally set was for 65% of our students to achieve a score of 50th percentile at least or higher on their Star Early Lit Reading and Math, and 65% of students in K-2 to achieve that 50th percentile or higher on their I-Ready Reading and Math Spring Diagnostic. And currently, our students in K-2, based on their latest Star Reading Assessment, depicts that 56% of those students are scoring in that 50th percentile or higher as of now. Students are progressing in a positive trend with a high likelihood of meeting that projected goal of 65% for our students in that grade K-2, of scoring that 50th percentile. And currently, students in K-2, based on the latest Star Math Assessment, have already depicted 74% of our students scoring the 50th percentile or higher, and students progressing in a positive trend exceeded that goal of that 65% that we had already set for them. The next goal that we set for MAS was identified for our students in grades three to five, and students in grades three to five are still working towards their goals of achieving 54% of students scoring at least a Level 3 or higher on their statewide standardized ELA and math assessment. According to the Winter Fast Progress Monitoring Assessment, students increased in reading from a 17% to 35% projected to achieve a Level 3 on their next assessment. And our math students, they did maintain 12% as their projected achievement for a Level 3. However, our I-Ready Winter Data predicted 29% for reading and 47% of math students achieving a Level 3 or higher for their fast assessments. Since the progress monitoring session two for fast assessments, we've continued to do additional assessments to monitor our students' progression and mastery of benchmarks, and these are indicating a faster movement with a positive trend in both reading and math. And this is strongly correlated to the implemented changes that have occurred in Semester Two in relation to the instructional delivery strategies and collaboration model that we've implemented school-wide. Do you guys have any questions on the academic portion? I'm going to hand it back over to Mr. Friedlander.
Okay. We're going to talk about the focus area for the next four years is going to be our school finances as well. The steady decline in parent jobs and affordable housing has taken a toll on the demographics and the economy of our area, as many of us know, and many families have simply moved out of the area. As a result, our enrollment has fluctuated between the high 40s to the mid 50s throughout the school year, while our current enrollment is at 48. To address this fluctuation in enrollment and revenue, we have consolidated classes and staff while maintaining competitive salaries, expertise, and standards. We began a 4% reserve effort in early 2020, remain committed to it, and working to add to those funds. In order to more efficiently manage them, we've engaged the Financial and Governance Services of Building Hope to assist with our fiscal management to strengthen governance. This has enabled timely reporting to the district for all financial reporting. All commitments are funded on time and with budget, within budget. We have taken advantage of the three-year ARP SIR grant, which runs through 2024 in the amount of $155,000. We have submitted invoices for these items and are waiting to be reimbursed. MAS is working through unexpected challenges such as reduction in our school meal program and Title I funding by reallocating our limited resources while still maintaining our academic rigor, healthy meals, and family engagement activities. Through the dedication of our staff, families, board, and community members, we have been able to offer enrichments in addition to academics that provide parents and students more options in their school of choice. A new summer enrichment program will offer enrichment activities geared towards topics not traditionally offered during the summer school year. Fundraising and budget adjustments continue to reduce costs and raise capital. We expect to generate approximately $35,000 in additional fundraising. Due to the unexpected decrement in funding from Title I USDA School Meal Program and capital outlay, we've put one of our primary goals on hold for the 2223 school year, which was providing transportation for our students. However, we have moved forward with our other primary goal, was establishing a VPK program, which will also serve as a feeder program for our K through 5. At this time, I'd like to thank Dr. James for offering her insights and expertise in this area when she visited our school. This program has met with, been met with a strong interest by our MAS families, local families, and community. We've also, we've entered into a partnership with DCF and the Early Learning Coalition of Marion County for our VPK program. Throughout the remainder of this school year, we will finalize the VPK program and anticipate providing a preschool opportunity during the summer 2023. We are 100% committed to establishing our VPK program and recognize that this program is greatly needed in our area, and will be a much-needed feeder, allowing us to have a VPK through 5 grade option for the families up in the northern portion of Marion County. Any questions regarding that section? Regarding our marketing and recruitment efforts, we continue to use the Remind app, email, webpage, and Facebook to maintain close, continuous, and supportive relationships with all our families. We have also added Instagram as another tool, to, social media tool, to extend our range of visibility in Marion and Elachua Counties. We have strengthened our relationship with the town of McIntosh and our other local municipalities, area businesses, and civic groups. During this year's 1890s Festival, MAS staff, parents, and board members volunteered to park over 500 vehicles at our school. This was a highly successful fundraising event, not only in revenue, but also in raising the awareness of our school to thousands of visitors. We are participating in the upcoming McIntosh Seedling and Garden Club's annual plant sale. Our school will have a booth at this community event, and all the potted plants that will be available for sale have been hand-decorated by our students. In addition, the McIntosh Seedling and Garden Club awarded a grant to the school to support our programs, and have also offered to provide guidance and support to continue a gardening program with our students wherein they learn botanical art, conservation, the life cycle, water cycle, and realize the fruits of their labor with growing their own flowers, fruits, vegetables, as an example. As you know, we have plenty of land to work with. We have reached out to families through surveys and parent meetings to solicit their ideas and suggestions on improving our existing programs in school. As a result of their input, we have extended our school day and added music and an MTS block into our daily curriculum. We have also increased our after-school tutoring program to provide supplemental academic supports and resources to our students with significant learning needs. In addition to extending it daily, to two days a week, we've also extended the times that they go, so those students are now getting more tutoring time as well. So those students are now getting more tutoring time as well. In addition to our runners club that meets weekly, we established an after-school art club that serves over fifty percent of our current student enrollment. Another activity that was held with the support of our families and community members was our first holiday music concert and family dinner held in a local church with our students performing. This was our very first function since the pandemic with over a hundred and seventy-five children, families, and community members in attendance. Our marketing and recruitment center is around establishing strong collaborative relationships with existing families, area businesses, civic organizations, the McIntosh Town Council and residents, and the Marion County Public School District. We have also included several churches in our effort to promote community awareness along with the fact that MAS is a contributing asset and active participant with the community. In summary, as you can see from the details provided in our annual report, every stakeholder of the McIntosh Area School is a hundred percent committed and invested into our future growth and success. Over the next four years, we project the need for MAS to increase and remain a vital partner with the MCPS, the town of McIntosh, and our neighboring communities to once again provide academic excellence and a vibrant school of choice for our families. Thank you for allowing us this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Friedlander. Board, do we have any specific questions for Mr. Friedlander or Dr. James?
I just wanted to say I've been out, I think, two times now.
Yes.
And it's been it's a it's a it's a very special place on the north end of our community for students to have an opportunity for a different learning experience. I want and I I guess maybe Mr. Ayers can help provide some insight if I if you all don't know the answer to this question. So we have a goal of being a B this year, which is tremendous. If we fall short of that goal, either slightly or significantly, what is the course of action with regards to the charter school and and how I don't I'm I'm just kind of unaware of the process, I guess, for where we will be if we fall short of that B, whether it's a C, D, or an F again, and what that looks like for the charter school to maintain its status with Marion County Public Schools, just to try and be transparent for everybody.
I don't mean to interrupt their presentation, but just to answer the question, there is state statute language that dictates for repeated low grades. As we're all well aware, McIntosh was an F last year. Depending on what their grade is this year, they could possibly be, you know, fall into the category of a double F or a D. This year is, due to the new state fast testing, a hold harmless year. So at that point, state statute will not come into effect for that. They would still be under, like they currently are now, the academic school improvement plan process where they have to do different things, but the state statute of the next steps, you know, would not come into play this year if they received another D or an F.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay.
I do believe you guys are doing great things to try and improve that school grade and work towards making academic improvements. We did, I got the opportunity to come out and talk a little bit about creating a pre-K program and what that would look like for them as a way to provide not only summer enrichment, but also a feeder, a natural feeder program. And so I think that working through those logistics with their school, I think, could be an opportunity for them, done in the right way, of course. And I I think that there is definitely potential for lots of great things to happen. So I'm looking forward to seeing how you guys turn out at the end of the year and what supports we can offer you.
All right. We appreciate that and I just want to comment that, you know, we do thank you for your inputs and and we realize the VPK piece is a big piece to enrollment increases in the future. There are a lot of families up there that are literally just have nothing else to go to. So there is a need, but to the point of the academic needs, that's why we put it, it's at the top of our list. We are well aware of the academic needs and and what transpired last year, and so we don't take this very lightly at all. We are a hundred percent committed, as I said, and we have taken the steps that we feel are necessary to make sure that our students are getting the best quality of education moving forward. And we'll we'll stop at nothing really to to make that happen. So we are committed to that and we've invested, our board is invested, our community is invested, our our families are invested in this school. And so we like to think very positively and that B is a goal that we have set for ourselves because we know our kids can do and we need to do better.
Well, after my visits, I do believe you guys are doing really good work out there. I think you guys serve a unique population. I saw multiple students with varying needs while I was out there for the first responders event, but you also have great family involvement in the fundraiser for when the McIntosh area, oh, what's it called?
Festival.
Thank you. I think that's a great idea and so there's lots of opportunities to do really good stuff and I think that you guys are trending in the right direction, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. James. Other board comments? Vice Chair.
Thanks, and and thank you, Dr. James, for providing support and and leadership to McIntosh Area School. It is a unique little school and as we've seen across the country, some areas were greatly more impacted by the effects of the pandemic than than others. And everything that I'm hearing is exactly what it takes and I'm pretty familiar with turnaround transformation schools and and the the levels of effort and and the passion and the commitment and that's exactly what I'm hearing. So I'm excited for your success.
Thank you very much.
Other comments?
And I I too want to echo the sentiments of my fellow board members. It does seem like you're trending in the right direction and the the processes that you have put in place. You have a cute little school out there and and I I appreciate all that you all are doing. Certainly, putting academic excellence and rigor as the very top priority has to always be that and it has to be that for all of our schools every because that's the purpose of what we do. And while marketing and finances and all that are also important, if we're not focusing, I'm of the belief that if we put academic rigor and excellence first, then the rest will just fall into place. And whenever you become a choice program, which is essentially what charter schools are, being a choice, you should do everything you can be to be the choice. And if you're providing that academic excellence, that actually gets to the achievement levels that you're looking for, then everything else will probably fall into place from there. So you may not have to do as much on the other areas if you focus on that. I'm I'm grateful that the team here at the district came out just a couple of months ago and you've already been able to implement several of those things and and get on track to and I I hope that the team is continuing to provide continued support and monitoring as we go along, Dr. Gullett and and Ms. Keiner and and all the team here at the district. As Dr. James, actually as Vice Chair Thrower, I too am grateful that Dr. James is providing some leadership from the board perspective for us up there in District Five in the North End and North Side Pride right here on our board. So with that, if there aren't any additional comments, we appreciate your presentation today and we will move on to our next charter school presentation.
Thank you.
We will have public comment at the end. I'm not sure if there will be, but if you want to stick around just in case any public comment comes forth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome back, Mr. Ayers.
Thank you, McIntosh. Our next presentation is going to be from our newest charter school, Ina A. Colon Academy, and here to present is the principal, Ms. Annie Avery, and I believe her board chair, Mr. Colon, is here in the audience as well.
Hello, welcome. Thank you for having me. I am so excited to be here as the new kid on the block. Thank you, Dr. Gullett and the school board. I would really like to thank Mr. Ayers for his support this year in helping define what a charter school, the the fine line between the charter school and the public school and how he's guided me and who can help me with what. Our building to our rubber bands, everything is new, so there has been some some hurdles to jump through and we have made it with forty-six days in county. My beginning screen to my PowerPoint had celebration with Cool and the Gang on it to get us going and that is the feeling I have right now for being here and making it this far. And our presentation today followed the exact PDF that Mr. Ayers sent me for today. We also don't have, obviously, any results to compare from last year, so I really focused on PM one and PM two, and I'll show you that going through the PowerPoint. But just to recap a little bit, we have sent home our re-enrollment intent forms this year and we have one hundred percent of our student population wanting to return next year. We have remained consistent with two hundred and fourteen students this year and we will be adding, we'll be up to four hundred and thirty-six students next year. We already have full enrollment for next year with a waiting list of approximately five hundred on the waiting list after accepting next year's class. So we are going strong. We don't want to grow too fast. I've been asked about a VPK program. It is not happening next year, but it is definitely not out of the question for the future. I've also done my re-intent for my teachers and completed their observations. A hundred percent of our teachers would like to return next year. As you know, with growing our population, I have the challenge of hiring between fifteen and eighteen new staff, so it's going to be a a long road ahead to get to get fully staffed for next year. With that, I'd like to go ahead and continue on with our presentation. Okay, that's small writing for me. Do you all have it in front of you? I have it in front of me also. Okay. I'm just going to go through the statistics a little bit, but our mission for the school is to cultivate passionate learners in an inclusive school community in which individuality and diversity are valued and students develop understanding and empathy for others through collaboration and active learning. Our school, many of you have visited so far, and if you haven't, I welcome you to come out, take the tour. It is nothing you've ever seen before. I am the luckiest gal in the world to be there. I have loved all of my years in the classroom as a teacher and I'm eager and excited that I have this new opportunity. Our school has an open learning concept. There's common areas throughout the school and our classrooms have sliding glass doors. We have the ability to keep those doors open so that students can move into the open areas because as our campus is surrounded and secure twenty-four seven, our buildings are also locked twenty-four seven. Therefore, we have the ability to keep our classroom doors open to use those common areas. Kids move back and forth within the campus with key fobs, so we are a very secure campus. If you go down to our personnel data, we have two administrative units, seventeen instructional units, eighteen non-instructional units. That number may seem high because it includes our after-school program assistance, so that's why that that looks a little higher. We do run our own after-school program. We have about half our school is enrolled in that program and we go until five-thirty every evening. All of our teachers have professional certification. Only two are teaching out of field. We provide health insurance, 401K, and we are not part of the FRS system. Our instructional salaries, our goal is to maintain the Marion County School Board teaching salary average. So we go from forty-eight, nine-oh-six to sixty-four, four-thirty-two. Okay, we have one permanent building. We're under one roof. I always tease that, coming from being a kindergarten teacher, it's a backwards letter Z shape is the shape of our building, but we are under one roof. We have forty-four classrooms, one campus, and we have a total of twenty offices. We have plenty of room to grow. We do not have any district-owned buildings. We rent our facility. You can see our yearly mortgage and our lease amount on on the paper. Our financial information, I'm not going to read that out loud. I put it in the report for you. We are financially stable. On the next screen, I've listed all of our curriculum that we're using within the classroom. It's all state-approved curriculum. A lot of it is consistent with Marion County. I did have a committee of teachers that chose the curriculum for the different grade levels before the school opened, and so they kind of got to have a hand in picking and choosing what we use for the different grade levels. So it's been a little bit of a challenge having kindergarten through sixth grade under one campus and running those two different bell schedules and letting the sixth graders feel like middle schoolers, yet having all the littles on the same campus. Next year, we will add seventh grade and we will have six middle school classes. They will be moving upstairs, so they will kind of have their own little middle school upstairs and be treated a little more like middle school. They'll be able to move between classes by themselves. They won't have to be walked by their teacher, which they did not like this year for middle school. We offer lots of different software programs. My teachers are also required as part of my MTSS plan. We don't have a set time during the day for MTSS, but because we have only two hundred and fourteen students this year, it allotted a little extra time for my special areas teachers. The extra time that those special area teachers have, they are required to go into the classroom and do MTSS. So it's certified teachers doing the MTSS for the classroom teachers. I also have two ESE teachers and our ESE population is not huge yet. It also afforded time for them to go into the classroom and provide intervention or enrichment is also an option. In addition, my teachers are required to do two days of after-school tutoring from two-thirty to three, so they are still in their contract time, but it's a tutoring session for students that they choose either need enrichment or intervention. And so the groups change all the time, but every teacher is required to do that. And they usually have a group between three to six. They don't have them much larger than that and and parents just pick up in the car line after or they're sent to the after-school care program. That is proving to be a big help because it's very customized to what each student might be struggling in or the teacher wants to take a little bit further. So that that has been a great program for us and I and the teachers didn't mind it. They they were happy to do it, so that was good. I'll keep going with the next is student achievement data. Of course, we don't have any, however, oh, I want to go back to this, the instructional framework and Dr. Gullett, you mentioned this when you did the tour of our school. We use Marzano's framework instead of Danielson's in the classrooms and you're very familiar with it, I guess, from your past in the classroom. And so she she was noticing all the targets for learning in the classroom. I really enjoy seeing the learning targets on the classroom when I go in and in their lesson plans because the kids are actually bought into the program and they know what target they're on and how high they need to get to to reach that learning goal. And a lot of the teachers will do thumbs up if you're understanding, thumbs, you know, to the middle if you need a little more help, or thumbs down if you're like, yeah, I don't really get this yet, I need a little more help. But I can actively see who's understanding, who needs a little more help, and I think it helps the teachers gauge, you know, where each student is and they're not embarrassed to put their thumb up, down, halfway, and seek the help that they need. So that's why I included that framework. Going on to our data, again, two hundred and fourteen students. We do the state assessments, the star reading, and the FAST. As you are all probably aware, the STAR test does not give us these pretty reports. We created these ourselves at the school. Since I can't compare with myself for last year, I wanted to compare with the district. So you will see MCPS Progress Monitoring One and you'll see IACA Progress Monitoring One. So you will see how we are comparing currently with the district. You'll see, and I wanted to bring to your attention, you all probably are aware, but for anybody watching, for PM two and the early literacy test, the score went down a little bit for that one B. The reason being is if they scored over an eight-fifty-two for PM two, they can take the STAR reading test. So ten students were taken out of that equation and moved up to the second grade test, so that's why that score shows lower. And I will just kind of go through these and let let you see them. I don't know if I need to explain everyone, I'm happy to, but the STAR test, one A and one B represents one first-grade teacher and then we have a second first-grade teacher. We have two second-grade teachers, so two A, two B. Here's our math and it includes kindergarten, first, and second. And now we go to, these are the are created by by the FAST test, these reports. So it shows state, district, and school. And I always focus on not how much red there is, of course, I'm looking at that, but how much movement there is within each section of the test. I like to see that orange growing, the green growing, and now we're starting to see purple in PM two in, you know, in all of us, state, district, and our school, showing the growth. I think this is an easy way to look at it, especially for people with old eyes looking at all those little numbers. at all those little numbers. Here's our third-grade math. Fourth-grade ELA, PM 1 and PM 2. Fourth-grade math. We only have one third grade, one fourth grade, and we only have one fifth-grade class. So, 22 students are being tested. And then, we'll go on to the fifth-grade math. In sixth grade, we have two sixth-grade classes. Here's six, sixth-grade ELA. My goals so far, as, as, you know, we're waiting on PM 3 to, to come about, my goals for next year are to wait for those results to come in, assess where we need to improve, what assessments or what interventions we might need to purchase, where we might need to adjust, um, where we might need to adjust MTSS, and to create our first school improvement plan. We, we didn't do that, obviously, in year one. I need to see where we need to improve first. Um, then I'd also like to, um, purchase, I-Ready was a big deal. When we first started the school, Marion County wasn't going to use I-Ready. So, when I was having to purchase for our school, I didn't purchase I-Ready. But now that it is needed as one of the alternative assessments for the mandatory third-grade retention, that's not an option for us because I don't have it. So, we will be using the alternative SAT 10, the STAR test, or the, um, summer program. So, those are the options for the third-grade retention. Um, and then, we will, we just have to look at the end of the year. Are there any questions for me? Ward?
I do have one question, Annie.
Sure.
So, I was excited to hear about, um, your program for after-school, and so, the students are pulled, and those are liquid, um, they're, you know, fluctuating all the time. So, when your parents sign up and commit to coming to school, is that part of their agreement if they are selected to do an after-school tutoring that they will attend?
There's no agreement pre, prior to school starting. When the teacher sees the need or wants to offer enrichment, they send a note home and organize those times with the parents.
Okay.
And the teachers can pick their own days, too. I don't tell them they have to do a Tuesday, Thursday. They can do Monday, Wednesday. They can do, you know, two, two days right in a row. It's up to them. So, it fits their schedule, too.
All right, thank you.
Additional questions?
I was just going to make a comment.
Dr. James?
So, I went out to visit, and I think I'm coming out maybe again next week.
Mm-hmm.
And it's a beautiful campus. It is a beautiful school. You guys did a tremendous job building it. I, uh, think that it is, again, another great opportunity for our southwest, um, side of town. I think adding preschool eventually is going to be, again, a great feeder for you guys. The concept is really amazing, and I, when I toured with Ms. Avery in the fall, as I walked the halls, I said, this is a leader's dream to be able to, um, some of the constraints that we're, we're tied to in, in, on our side of the table, to be able to have a little bit of that alleviated for you as a leader, and to be able to have fluctuation in how your teachers, um, deliver their instruction, and, um, just the fluidity and where they deliver the instruction and the flexible seating arrangements, and it really is an educator's dreamland. Uh, I think it's a wonderful opportunity for our students and our families, and I would love to be able to get to a place where we can, um, try and emulate some of that in our public schools, and I know we are, and I would love to just continue to do that in our school setting because it, it is really pretty cool, so.
Thank you.
Good work.
Thank you, Dr. James. Yes, Vice Chair.
Sure, I'll just make a comment and, 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 uh, thank you. We, uh, continue to be so blessed by the charter schools that we have that, that represent us so well and are so passionate for helping every student succeed. You're truly part of us, and I was pretty confident when the idea was, was, was pitched that it would go off just the way it has so far, and, um, it's a testament to the expertise and, and the planning and the management and the partnership. It's what it takes.
Thank you.
You have anything?
Thank you. Great presentation. What you, what you've done, what all of you have done, the charter schools have given parents another choice, uh, uh, option. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Avery. Really appreciate the presentation, certainly looking forward to wonderful things coming out of Ina A. Cohen and with Mr. Cohen here. It's such a legacy to, to your mother and, and all that you and your brother have done, and, uh, all the work that has gone into this. As Dr. James was saying, it, it really is an amazingly beautiful inspirational campus that we all strive to one day be able to have a part, uh, that learning environment, have a part of, of other, other places and other opportunities that our students can have as well. So, thank you so much for bringing this to our community and for being a, a great partner with Marion County Public Schools. We're, we're grateful and looking for continued great things ahead.
Thank you, and thank you again to Mr. Ayers for all of his help and Mr. Cohen for his support today.
Wonderful. Mr. Ayers?
Thank you, Ms. Avery and Ina Cohen Academy. Um, two points of clarification, just so that you're aware. Ina Cohen Academy opened up as a K-6 school. They're adding seventh grade next year, and then they'll add eighth grade the following year for that. And also, I know we've mentioned VPK a couple times. Um, VPK is separate from the charter aspect mainly because of the funding, because remember, VPK does not receive FTE funding. It's funding through the Early Learning Coalition, and if they provide wraparound services, which is the full day, they would have to charge for that. Charter schools aren't allowed to charge, so it would be sort of a separate aspect and no kummingly of funds or whatever, but there is a way to get that done. So, I just wanted to make sure that you understood that VPK is not part of the actual charter program on that. All right, finally, we have our last charter school, O'Callie Charter Middle School, and we have Ms. Matthews.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews. Madam Chairman, Madam Vice Chairman, Board Members, Superintendent Gullett. It's, uh, I'm always very grateful for this opportunity to speak in front of you. Today, I'm actually humbled to be last, right? To follow such an amazing group of people with the passion that you saw from Marion Charter and the determination that McIntosh brought to this podium, and then the excitement that Ms. Avery brought from Ina Cohen. So, for me, eh, the opportunity to speak and to share about the successes and the, uh, work that we're doing at O'Callie Charter Middle School, it's just a real honor and a humbling experience. Our mission is pretty simple. We want to help students reach their greatest potential in a small school setting. I sometimes believe that if you get the right educators with the right passion and you put them out in the field, they could teach anything, and those children would master that content. And so, at O'Callie Charter, we focus very strategically on hiring passionate people who love coming to work, and we stay focused on creating an environment where they get out of their cars every single day, and they're excited to be there. We do employ 29 team members, and, uh, we're kind of stunted on our growth, which you guys know, uh, we just don't have any more space. So, we're serving about 200 students at this time. We do have a waiting list of over 100 students wanting to be part of the O'Callie Charter Middle School program. Our focus remains and always will be that of customer service. Today, you heard from elementary schools, but we have the honor of serving middle school students, and that is a whole different ballgame. These kiddos are exploring their independence. We encourage them to find their voices, and with that, we have to model the behavior that we want from our students. We focus on honest communication, genuine and kind service to all who enter our school, and I hope if you ever visit, that's what you'll find. We are still addressing the gaps, and got, quite honestly, over 70% of the students that come to our school in sixth grade are non-proficient in reading and math, or one of the other. So, when you look at the fact that when they start with us, 70% of our students are non-proficient, our entire three years with them is trying to level that playing field. So, that when they leave us and they go to high school, they have the foundational skills that they need in order to be successful in learning higher-level math, and that major transition from learning to read to reading to learn. We have to ensure that they are able to read and that they can comprehend well so that they can be successful in all of their other subject areas. So, on average, over 70% of our sixth graders come to us non-proficient, and so, we continue to implement things like intensive math and intensive reading for all of our students who are Level Ones and Level Twos. And this year, any student that was a Level Three in math, we included them in the intensive remediation courses as well to ensure that they had a solid foundation in mathematical skills. We do cyclical math within our classrooms where we're constantly going back and reminding them of skill sets that they're going to need as they enter into algebra and geometry and further on. We do one-on-one instruction as well as small bake breakout groups with these students, um, enrichment as well as remediation, and then we focus heavily on the home and school learning connections. Parents are as important in middle and high school as they are in elementary school. And so, part of our role is educating parents on how to do that. Um, we believe that the majority of our parents, actually, we believe that all of our parents want what's best for their children, but so many of them at this point just don't quite know how to do that. And so, we are constantly working with them in an effort to ensure that they do know that. We, of course, have ESE support facilitation, and this year, 24% of our population is ESE. We have one-on-one device ratios, so we have the computers that the students work on. And then, the piece that I am very committed to is our family academic support team. It's called FAST, not to be confused with the newly-named state assessment. They stole my name. Um, FAST, FAST stands for Family Academic Support Team. This is all about the missing ingredient, and I, I could get on a soapbox here, but the truth of the matter is, education is a three-legged stool. It's the educators, it's the children, and the third leg are our parents. And so, as we look at how to help them, support them, I joke all the time that they need an owner's manual to secondary education and that child as they enter into middle school, um, although I joke, it's the truth. How do you discipline a child who is six foot tall? How do you support their efforts at home? And the FAST team does that. The FAST team is focused on really deliberate communication, falling back on our customer service model, honest, truthful, with respect conversations about how they can support their child, what choices their child is making, and how we work together as a team to be successful. All of our communications are documented, and the action items that we do are outlined both through the families as well as the educators in our schools. We find that our parents need many different ways to get to school, and that may be through teleconferences, Zoom meetings, scheduling meetings in the morning, meetings in the afternoon, meters, meetings later in the evening. We do what it takes to be there for our parents, to help educate them. A couple of our key achievements, uh, that we have had, just a few. From August to January, our Level One math proficiency reduced by 22% school-wide. So, we went from, quite honestly, 70 to 80% Level Ones, and we're now down in the 60s, high 50s. Um, so, that was just a half-year, but we're seeing a lot of growth in our students as we focus on those foundational skills. 52% of our students participated in IXL Math, and they have increased their diagnostic levels, um, by one grade level, um, from September 22nd through January of 2023. And lastly, just a little bragging rights here, we have a teacher by the name of Diane Schwartz. She teaches Algebra I, and last year, 85% of the students who took that Algebra I EOC passed. So, we were very impressed with that, which is somewhat ironic when you look at where they come in at, or rather, not ironic, but impressive. So, at this moment, I'd just like to thank you all for this opportunity, and I continue to appreciate the ongoing growth that I've seen in the district as it, as it relates to charter schools. When I first came on eight years ago, it was a much different relationship, and that relationship has grown and blossomed, and I appreciate that you all are embracing charter schools as an asset to the Marion County School District, and I hope that, that you see daily that we work, um, that we work to enhance that which you are already doing. Questions?
Thank you. Ms. Matthews, board questions for Ms. T.C. Matthews? Dr. James?
I am coming to visit, I think.
Tuesday.
Yeah, next week. I, I live day by day.
It's all good.
So, um, but I'm excited to come out and visit, and I'm excited about the addition of our charter high school next year.
Yes.
Um, and just expanding those opportunities. So, I'm, I guess you're a great summary to our presentations of some other options that Marion County Public Schools and our, um, reaches have to offer our students. So, thank you for your work.
Our pleasure. Very quick update, if I may?
Yes, please, on the high school, if you don't mind.
I'd love to. We signed a lease for a building, uh, just, actually, I just received the fully executed, um, lease. Uh, we have, we will be serving 100 ninth and 10th graders next year, and we are almost fully enrolled at about 90% right now. Mrs. Elizabeth Brown will serve as the principal of that school, so it will open August of this year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Reverend Cummings?
I do. I got a question, and I'm, I'm just curious. Um, I, I, I'm, I'm always looking at the demographics of the schools, and I see you have a very, um, higher, I won't say a very high, you have a higher percentage of Hispanic students.
We do.
What is, what is it that's drawing that?
Silver Spring shores.
I'm sorry?
We have a large percentage of our students that come from the shores.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, they would be typically zoned for Lake Weir Middle School, and that's, um, I think that's why our Hispanic population is high. Um, we provide a bus route in that region as well, and so, a lot of those students ride our bus in. Yep, so, we do, uh, we serve about 22% Hispanic students. Yes, sir.
That's, that's interesting, and that has, it's interesting to me because there's a charter school out there in that area.
But they, that charter school is elementary only, and a lot of those students come straight to us. So, a lot of the Marion Charter kids come to O'Callie Charter Middle School.
And that's why I say it's interesting because I would have, would have thought that there would be like a feeder pattern that comes from there, and there would be a large percentage at that school as well.
Oh, I, I'm sorry. What was their percent of Hispanic students? Do you remember? It wasn't that high?
As high as yours, no.
I think it's interesting, if you look at our ELL totals, that's only 13% of our population.
Right. All right. Thank you.
I do have one question. Dr. James?
So, the charter high school is not going to be close to the shores. It is, um...
It's on West Anthony Road.
Yeah, it's in my neck of the woods.
So, it's more northern than, uh, eastern?
So, my question is, you do provide transportation.
We do.
Are you going to do some kind of hub at the middle school to get to the high school then, or are you going to bus directly from neighborhood to the high school? What is that going to look like? Because I would, I mean, there, you're adding probably with traffic, close to 20 minutes on the road.
Absolutely. And just for reference, we have a bus route currently that students ride almost an hour and a half to get to the school.
Ooh.
Wow.
Yeah. Um, so, with that being said, we will have hubs in the Silver Spring Shores area because we know a large portion of our students want to transition into our high school, and we will provide them with that opportunity.
Okay.
Great idea, though, about making the middle school a hub. Had not thought about that.
Oh, you're right.
Well, we'll look into it.
You're all right.
Always thinking.
Yes. Any other, Vice Chair?
Yes, I have. Always great to see you, Principal Matthews.
Thank you, it's always my pleasure.
You know, thank you for your continued commitment to serving middle school, um, which definitely is its own animal.
Yeah.
And also, doing it with such success and, and, and passion and, and just the willingness to see things as they are and, and accept the kids coming as they are and, and working with them, and to accelerate the Algebra EOC the way, um, you guys have, what a testament to the, to the teacher. And to accelerate the Algebra EOC the way you guys have, what a testament to the teacher. So, I thank you, and you'll probably be seeing this later. And it's always fun to come and visit, also too, because you're right next to Scrambles, so I try to combine that.
Love that.
Always an uplifting day.
Thank you. I'm glad Scrambles and the school can bring brightness to your day. My pleasure. Are we good?
Yeah, I think so. Thank you so much, Ms. Matthews. It's always a pleasure to see you, and I know that when you and I met several years ago, the kind of the climate was a little bit different. And so, I too am grateful that this district and this board has embraced the idea that charter schools are helping fill a need for multiple students and helping achieve student success throughout this community, and you are a testament to that. So, thank you for all your work and diligence in the middle school years, because those are so unique and interesting, and you have been very dedicated to this work. So, thank you so much for that. And with that, I think we appreciate all that you've done. Mr. Ayers, do we have anything to wrap this up? And then, I'll call on public comment. Thanks again, T.C.
Pleasure.
Thank you, O'Callaghan Charter Middle and Ms. Matthews. Just one another point of clarification, with the exciting times that the high school is opening, they are separate charters. It's all under Clear Choice Academies, which is their parent organization. Ms. Matthews will be the executive director over both of them, but they are two different charters, just to clarify on that.
We're just adding to the number of reports we'll see in the future.
Next year, they'll get two reports.
Yeah, they'll get two. Ms. Matthews will give you two reports next year, so.
Understood, yes.
And you know what I was just thinking, thinking of uplifting pairing and O'Callaghan Charter being next to Scrambles, well, the high school is going to be right next to Fordham, right? And it's always uplifting experience to visit Fordham Early Learning Academy, so I'm excited. Good stuff, thank you.
I do have a question for Mr. Ayers. As I just stated a few minutes ago, I look at the demographics of the schools. One was missing. Was there a particular reason why one of the schools did not provide demographics? McIntosh?
It should have been in the group. If it wasn't, then that was my mistake, and I apologize, and we will get that to you.
Thank you.
Their demographics, because I included their.
Unless I'm overlooking it, did you guys see it? It's not in there?
It wasn't in chart form, I can tell you that.
Right, it should have been included in the, their actual.
They didn't do a presentation.
Application.
Right.
That they did, or their report they submitted. I will get that to you today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ayers. We appreciate all your work on overseeing our charter schools and the alternative learning.
It's a pleasure. It's great people to work with in grade schools.
Thank you so much. So, with that, is there any public comment on our charter school annual reports, or annual review, I guess you'd say? No public comment? Thank you so much, Mr. Ayers. We appreciate you. Thank you to all of you, Ms. Avery, Ms. Matthews, anybody else who's, I can't see who else is still here, but thank you, Mr. Cohen, again. Thank you, Ms. Hildebrand, to see you. All the good work that's being done in our charter schools in Marion County. We appreciate the partnerships that we have with these charter schools and the work that's being done to help every student succeed in Marion County. Thank you.
Dr. Gullett, I believe we're on to item five point, no, four point one, excuse me, four point one.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to call forward, Dr. Livinggood and Ms. Riedel, I think, will follow. Want to introduce that they've spent a lot of time in our, on this work. Student Progression Plan, as you know, is very comprehensive in nature, so I know that they've done their due diligence, and we look forward to hearing your feedback of adjustments that might be needed for the upcoming year. Thank you.
Good morning, Superintendent Dr. Gullett, Board Chair Mrs. Campbell, Vice Chair Mrs. Throer, and Board Members. With guidance from our Chief Academic Officer, Ms. Talia Irving, we are here today to provide you with Part One of our recommendations for revisions to the twenty-three, twenty-four Student Progression Plan. The committee included representatives from our academic services team from areas such as our mental health, school choice, career technical education, student pathways and assessments. Administrators, teachers, and parents were also included to ensure we had a wide variety of voices and input. I have the privilege of welcoming Mr. Mark Ingram. He is the Curriculum Coordinator for K-12. He will present the committee's work to you. And at the end of the presentation, Elementary Director, Mrs. Deborah Riedel, and I will be available for questions if there are any.
Thank you, Dr. Livinggood. Good morning, Board Members, Dr. Gullett, Ms. Martinez Lopez, and Attorney Powers. Before I start, I want to talk about the last time I was up here, and I was doing recognition for the Bridges Project Essay Contest. And I had students and teachers here, and one of those teachers was John Gibb. And before he went up, I told, or before we came up, I told him I was going to introduce him as TikTok superstar John Gibb. And he chuckled at me, and he said I wouldn't, and of course, I did, and he turned bright red. And I just want to echo that sentiment that he is a superstar, and he had a huge impact on that school and community, and my thoughts and prayers are with them as the boards are too. Thank you.
Mr. Ingram.
So, we'll start with our purpose. The purpose of the progression plan is to provide students, parents, and staff a guide for what students must know and are able to do to progress through each grade level in accordance with Florida statute. So, that's our first goal, is that we make sure we do everything in alignment with Florida statute. So, based on annual legislation and technical assistance from the DOE, and then, on top of that, the existing Florida statutes, our board policies, and all those things take precedence over the items in the plan. We also got input from parents, teachers, directors, coordinators, and principals. We do have some next steps. We'll have an additional work session if needed on April sixth and public hearing April twenty-fifth, and we'd like to do Part Two on June first, once new legislation has been passed, so that we can have this in place for the start of school. So, a lot of these revisions are just in simple areas or in rewording and rephrasing, and I'll just go through these. You also should have a redline copy of the actual plan, but here's a summary. The first revision is we're changing the phrasing MTSS Plan to MTSS Framework, just because that more accurately reflects our multi-tiered system of support and how we implement it. And we're changing the use of DUSS to state data entry into U.S. schools because of where it's used throughout. It just makes it more clear that you have it referenced fully. This is a clarification that came from our ESE department. Students, and I have, and I'll point out the change, students with disabilities who are parentally replaced in private school in Marion County can still receive ESE services based on a service plan, not through an IEP. So, that's just a clarification that we offer a service plan when they're not enrolled in a Marion school. This next slide is for students, this next change is for students who are under age six and are not yet enrolled. They are referred to FD LRS, or Fiddlers, prior to enrollment in a K-12 school. This next statement, you can see the change on page fifteen, but essentially, this was just written to be more clear and clear-cut, although there's a lot going on. It just states a free and appropriate public education, a FAPE, is available to all students with disabilities residing in Florida from the age of three until they earn a standard high school diploma or their twenty-second birthday, whichever occurs first, including students with disabilities who have been suspended or placed in an alternative education program. So, this language comes from the state, but it's been reworded and clarified, so it's easier to follow. This next one's a simple one. The website link changed, so we had to update it in the progression plan. This is the Cognia Database of Accredited Schools. This one was a little more tricky. In our elementary registration portion, we have this line that created some confusion. If a child enters a public school at age six without evidence of kindergarten completion on an official transcript, that is, will place a student in the first program of study, and this is kindergarten. We have more clarifications on page eight on what we do when students enter. And this sentence being where it was kind of created some confusion, and some schools are extrapolating that for older students and placing them potentially in kindergarten too. This next page mostly just references that our proficiency charts had to change with the update in state testing. So, on twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and thirty-one, and thirty-two, those charts are updated to show the new proficiency indicators and the new scores. We've added a reference to benchmark assessments in our other assessments in our district assessments page, and we've also added clarification that for students to receive test accommodations, they must have an IEP or a 504, just like they would for the state or a national test. This next one is kind of the big one. We are adding some language to how we promote in grade six or eight, and I'll talk you guys through the process we went through determining this. Students will be regularly promoted at the end of the year to the next grade level if they have passed three courses from the core areas of English, math, science, and social studies. Our current language allows for promotion if students pass one course. Looking at other districts around the state, looking at other districts around the state, about half of the districts that I surveyed require three of four core courses passed each year for promotion. The other half require four of four. For promotion to ninth grade, you have to have passed all your core courses in middle school. So, what we're hoping this does is we attack the problem early rather than waiting until that eight-point-five year, which we know is an issue on its own. So, we can take questions on that, but we are going to do our best to try to put resources into getting those students into credit recovery and the appropriate courses. But this is really meant to be a wake-up call to students and parents that they aren't on track to finish middle school if they're not completing their core courses.
I'll wait.
Thank you. And with that, we've added the language that students who have failed a core course should, if possible, be placed in a credit recovery course in place of an elective until successful completion of the core course. We are working on as many avenues as possible to get that credit recovery going. What we're hoping this does is allows us to spread that credit recovery through sixth, seventh, and eighth, not just waiting till eighth grade when we're working on high school promotion. We've also changed some wording on this next slide. In our current progression plan, students must complete the requirements by the tenth grade of the new school year to be eligible for the option to move to their high school. We're still going to work on making sure this is a smooth transition and when students are able to move, but this ten-day requirement was sort of causing a logjam of students who didn't have a place to be, because you can't be in a middle school if you've completed eighth grade, and we were saying they couldn't move on to high school. This slide talks about our move from the Ignite Academy for our eight-point-five students to the Acceleration Academies, which we're excited about. So, we've updated the statement to read, three or more units deficient at fifteen years of age, these are eighth graders, may be eligible to attend Acceleration Academies, which is designed to accelerate unit credit completion with the goal of making the student eligible for enrollment in high school at the completion of the program. And just the writer, placement in the program will be based on available seats. Then, we have some updates to dual enrollment. We added PSAT to the statement that to enroll in dual enrollment, students have to show college readiness. PSAT is now a score they can use as well, which is great, because we use the PSAT pretty widely, and that's another way students can qualify. In that dual enrollment plan, we've also removed an articulation agreement with Hillsborough Community College. The Pathways Department explained to me that that's because those courses weren't being used at HCC, they were being used in other places. We still have a way if a student wants to attend that school through another progression pathway. With grading procedures, I just cleaned up a couple bullets and merged some ideas about parent contact and notifications and how parents find their report cards and progress report grades in Skyward. So, it's all in like one concise paragraph. And then, we removed this section on standards-based grading, because we feel like the category weights can function for standards-based grading as well, depending on how the school chooses to use those. This next one, this is an update that already exists to our educational equity statement, and I've underlined what's new. Marion County Schools does not discriminate on the basis of race, including anti-Semitism, ethnicity, color, national origin, sexual orientation, disability, including HIV/AIDS or sickle cell trait. So, that's the only change in that big chunk of text. And then, on the next page, the other change is a lack of English language skills will not be a barrier to admission or participation. And beyond that, contact info for the relevant departments was added to this page too, something we'll have to make sure keeps updated. This next one is a positive gain for our students. We have an EL graduation option offered by the state now. It allows for alternative assessments for students who have been in the program for ELs, English Language Learners, for less than two years, so they can still have a pathway to graduate without necessarily being able to pass the state tests. And that's the summary of revisions. We still have some legislative updates. I don't know if you guys have heard about those, but there are some changes still coming included. I know they're talking about an ESE graduation requirement, and so, we will have to revisit this. That's why this is Part One of Two, because those legislative sessions could potentially run into May.
Madam Chair, if I may, thank you, Mr. Ingram. Yeah, I wouldn't underscore that point that, Chair, you're probably aware and Board Members, that there's a lot happening right now in Tallahassee, and so, we fully anticipate more updates will be needed, and we'll be bringing those back to the board.
Absolutely. Session ends May seventh, and until that date, there's a lot of movement occurring in Tallahassee right now.
Right.
Okay, Board, we'll actually start with Reverend Cummings, because he had a question right out of the gate.
You talked about the EL graduation, and you said that they've come up with something where they can graduate without passing the state test?
So, they have to pass an alternative assessment, which we can create, and so, our Pathways and Assessment Department has been working on that. So, essentially, something you submit to the state to show proficiency another way, because there's only so many opportunities to pass that state.
Will it still be the same type of diploma?
I believe so, yes.
Additional questions, Board?
I have two.
Dr. James?
On slide fifteen, you discussed our eight-point-five-ers. Question, I know we're going to go into it in the presentation that's coming next, but my question is really, I don't know, it's not very specific, I guess, but you note on the slide, on slide fifteen, that they are fifteen, but there are eighth graders who are fourteen. There are ninth grader, there are kids who rise into ninth grade still fourteen, many of them. So, I'm just wondering why it specifies the age fifteen here, and then, does that exempt kids if they were fourteen and fell into this category?
That's a good question, Dr. Living.
Yes. Yes, and we'll speak to that at the very next presentation, but because we have so many students, we need to set a criteria, and that would be the criteria that we would use as an overage student would be fifteen with a unit, more than three units deficient in middle school.
So, if I am a fourteen-year-old who's spent three years in middle school and am unit deficient, will I stay in middle school?
Yes. It's a state statute that to be promoted to high school, you must have the twelve middle school units.
So, I would not go to Acceleration Academies if I am fourteen and credit deficient?
Correct.
I would stay for a fourth year at my middle school?
Well, yes, but we will, because like he said, he used the word attack, we're going to attack this problem earlier, and so, sixth graders are going to go ahead and start taking credit recovery as soon as they have possibly failed the first semester. So, yes, this number is going to look high this first year, but once we start addressing this problem early, we're going to reduce the overall number of students that will be fourteen at the end of eighth grade that might not have the twelve units.
When I turn fifteen, do I then fall into this category? Or if I am fourteen on August tenth, I then stay at middle school the entire school year?
No. We work, because this is, of course, a Marion County plan, we work just like we do now. We have for years worked with our Ignite Academy to recommend and refer students to the academy based on individual circumstances.
Okay, I'm sorry for all the semantical questions, but so, if I'm a fourteen-year-old and my birthday is in January, like mine, so I So if I'm a 14-year-old and my birthday is in January, like mine, so I turned 15 in January of my ninth grade year, so if, if I was this student and I was 14 and credit deficient, I would go back to my middle school, I would work on credit recovery and maybe sit in some classes for original credit again, right? Because I could, I could sit theoretically in an eighth grade English class to try and get original credit instead of like on Plato or another, another resource. But when January comes and I turn 15, will there then be a recommendation from school site to, to, to send me to Acceleration Academy for the rest of my, God, God, hoping I would have earned the credits in the first semester, but had I not?
Yes. Okay, so right now, we already addressed that. We already know if you're going to be 15 and you already are deficient in units, we already send those referrals over. So we don't say you have to wait until you're 15 if your birthday is in January. So our rule of thumb is when we speak to the principals, like the number I'm, I'm going to share in a, in a few minutes is, we have 200 students right now that we know are already 15 and have more than five, are more than five units deficient in eighth grade. So we have to create a criteria to say those students are going to be our priority. But from then, we can look at other students to say, oh, you're going to be 15, you already might be four units deficient, we're going to refer you.
Okay, and then my last question on this item, and then I have one other slide. If I spend the first semester at, let's say I go back to Fort King for my, for, I'm, I qualify to go back to Fort King for my fourth year, and I spend the first semester there, and I get caught up on all my credits, and then I'm zoned for Forest. I go to Forest semester two, but it is now semester two of all of those courses, not semester one. So am I sitting in semester two and then doing Plato for semester one, or I have to sit somewhere, I have to find back time to go to original credit?
Yes.
Right?
Yep. So, okay, what she just gave is a very important scenario, and this is why one of the recommendations that Mr. Ingram presented to you was for us to have a more flexible plan, because the challenge is if a student finishes their eighth grade unit in October, which is of course after the 10-day count, we have, we're in a bind because we don't have a place for them to go, they're missing out on first semester of high school courses. And so our goal is to go ahead at that time, enter them into our new platform, which will be Edgenuity, into a coursework for first semester courses. And then, so when they arrive at the second semester to their high school, they will not be deficient. If they have not quite completed that first semester course through Edgenuity's platform, it will be okay because some high school credits work off semesters. So they can begin a second semester course face-to-face while they are enrolled in a first semester online credit-bearing course. Did that answer your question, Dr. James?
You did. I would just draw real concern to a kid who couldn't even get the credits face-to-face done in time and needed a whole extra semester in middle school. If they are this kid who finishes in October, they're, they're, one, probably, data would show that they're probably not going to get that whole semester done in one nine weeks. So then they, the likelihood of them carrying that online load into semester two face-to-face instruction at their base high school is pretty high, and they are probably not the type of student who can successfully complete twice the coursework when their data has shown that they couldn't even complete, they struggled to complete one, one caseload of work face-to-face.
It is a little different, though, when we, when we put the students in high school and they be, they can begin working with their peers and they can begin working with other incentives. They do tend to move a little faster in our credit recovery programs than they do in middle school courses, but the advantage of that would be the student would continue with that cohort of students through the 12th grade. We know in the back of the scheduling tracking for that student that that student still has that first semester of that freshman year. And it would be very important that those guidance counselors and those working, or that graduation facilitator really is tracking those students. But we just cannot delay that student from starting high school any longer because the more and more we delay them, their likelihood of them graduating on time, the, the numbers decrease.
I, I agree. So, so where will their body be? When I finish my middle school credits in October at Fort King Middle, just as an example, and I finish everything, I get, I get my Plato's done, because Plato is what we're using, right, for credit recovery still, or no?
Until May 26.
Okay. So if I get, if I get whatever that credit recovery done is...
Ah, I hear things. I hear microphones.
Yes, ma'am.
It popped again, are we good?
No, I, I...
Oh, that's you popping?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, we're, let's, let's see where everybody is. Reverend Cummings is outside the door. Okay. And here comes Ms. Martinez-Lopez.
Yeah.
The players back at the team.
I know. Let's get us all back in before we come back out of recess that could not have come at a better time. Oh, Reverend Cummings just said that, or? Okay, well, give him just a second. Let's get at least... Coming back out of recess at 11 o'clock AM, for those listening at home, we had a quick power surge that sent us offline for just a moment, and we are back at it. So thank you, Dr. Livinggood. I think we were in the midst of question and answer, and I don't remember if we were in question or in answer, but Dr. James?
I was just asking, where, where is the child's body? So when the child finishes eighth grade credits in October of the, that their eight and a half school year, do they go and they do that credit recovery or that, that original credit for ninth grade in a lab at the high school? Do they stay at the middle school site? Where, where is that child going to go?
Okay, that's a great question. The, we have so many preventative measures that will be in place, that these numbers are going to be reduced. But to answer your question directly, that student would remain on that middle school campus, and it depends on the timeframe. If it's first quarter, we're in a different scenario than if we move into the second quarter. Keep in mind, in order to earn a high school credit, a student must have 67 and a half seat hours. So it's really difficult for us to move a student directly to the high school with a middle school promotion, because then we're setting that student up to fail that first semester because they won't have the seat time. And so that's why we really are trying to get our middle school progression plan really tight to ensure that our numbers are being reduced. So when a student finishes eighth grade, they truly are prepared to move on to high school. And if there is a need to recover units, that that's taken care of soon as they have been unsuccessful in a class. Keep in mind, we also have the Edgenuity platform coming to us at the end of this, at, end of, end of May, and that platform is going to allow teachers the ability to assign instructional restorative practice inside the classrooms. So if a student is being unsuccessful in English, that's one of our most difficult subjects, in eighth grade, before that student even is unsuccessful at the end of that semester, a teacher will have the ability to assign that student some modules through the Edgenuity platform, and then hopefully that student will recover that nine-week grade before it's calculated into the semester grade. So the answer is they will remain on the middle school campus at that time until they complete, if it's right at the beginning of the second quarter or right at the end there, they will stay in the, at the middle school campus until we can move them at the beginning of second semester to the high school.
Okay, and then my, I think that, that was my only secondary question. I had one elementary question.
Okay.
So on slide 10, we talk about entry into kindergarten with age. If a child comes to us at age seven and has never been to school, which does happen, I know that's crazy to think, but it does happen, are we saying that we are going to place that child in first or second grade? Is that what this is saying?
Which, which slider?
Slide 10.
Okay. If a child enters public school at age six without evidence of kindergarten. So that, we're, the reason we're moving that is because that belongs under entry into first grade. That's what the statute is referring to. Where it was before was causing a lot of confusion because we interpreted that and schools interpreted that as if they come at age eight or nine, we have to put them in kindergarten. That's not the case. The way the statute reads is it's based on a screener that the school does when the child enters, and any data that student comes with, and then it's ultimately the principal's responsibility where that student is placed. So if they come at age eight with no evidence of anything, they have to, they have to be given some types of assessment to determine the best placement. So we don't have to put that student in kindergarten.
And what would we use? What, what assessment tools would we use?
So we'd probably, I mean, right now, we'd probably use, give them the FAST, not FAST, the PM1 for iReady if that happened, say, this coming school year or this past school year. Moving into next year, it's going to depend on what assessments we have. We could pull a phonics screener from Ufly, things like that. If we're in the assessment window, it would be FAST PM1.
Okay. I think that was my only question for elementary, so thank you.
Madam Chair.
Reverend Cummings.
Slide 12, where it talks about students being regularly promoted at the end of the year to the next grade level, and the principals having the, the privilege to promote them even if they've failed a grade, failed a core course. So potentially you'll have a kid that has failed a core course, but yet they're still saying that they're in the seventh grade. If, if, if I understand that correctly?
Let me speak to that.
It's slide 12, but it's actually slide 13 on our...
On the PDF, it's 13.
So what this is saying is that students should be placed in a credit recovery course, but this does not supersede the fact that they should remain in their grade, or they should be remaining in their grade if they didn't get enough credits.
So they would be retained still?
If, if they do, now, there is, there is other language that does give some principal discretion. Let's say something happened with a particular student who is consistently passing every grade, and something happens at the end of a semester where they're unable to pass. The principal does have some leeway where they could promote that student, knowing that there's a plan in place for credit recovery.
And with that, with this credit recovery, I know we use Plato, but that's gone away to something different, or we're changing something different.
Imagine.
Is that offered throughout the summer? Is it just because, I'm thinking, some of these kids, if they still have their regular coursework, schoolwork, they may not be, still may not be able to do it during the regular school term.
Yes. So it's, it's part of our, our summer program. In fact, we, we have a really robust summer offering of it. We also just started this past week night school tutoring for credit recovery students too. We are, we are going to try to attack this issue in, in as many ways as possible to make these credits available to the students in and out of the school day, because we, we know that's one of our biggest problems, is making sure we have enough credits for, for grade promotion and for graduation.
Because, because to me, this is, this middle school transition from middle school to high school, this is, this is that vital piece for kids being successful. I think that's, when they disconnect, they disconnect at the middle school level, and it's hard to get them back when they at the high school level. So I want us to do whatever we can in this progression plan to make sure that if they, if we see them starting to disconnect, that we're trying to connect them back to academic.
Right, and that's really where the, that's really where the grade promotion thing comes from, not letting you have, be on paper, be a seventh grader without three or four credits.
Right.
We want, we want parents and kids to know that this, this is serious, you're not moving on to the next grade until, now, you may be taking your next three classes, but we're hoping we can head some of these problems off earlier by making that communication clearer. But we know, we do, they have to earn all 12 of those credits to move out of middle school, so for their six periods, their core classes, and they have to pass every one of those if they want to get into ninth grade. So we've got to be vigilant, and on top of that, and I think just this change in that grade promotion will, will make that more apparent to our school staff members, to our parents, to our teachers, and to our students, and hopefully we end some of that slide and some of that checking out. Because I, I agree, middle school is where we lose a lot of kids, we lose a lot of boys particularly.
And the reason I'm, I'm stuck there is because I recently had a conversation with No Name No Blame with us middle schooler, and they were like, "I'm in the eighth grade." And I was like, "You got all your credits?" And I was like, "Well, no, I'm still doing sixth grade credits." And I'm saying, "Okay, so if you have to do sixth grade credits, that also tells me you got some seventh grade credits to do, and you haven't even started on eighth grade credits." So I'm, in my mind saying, "You got three years of credits that you got to recover, and, and I'm looking at your regular course, courses, and I'm looking at the time that you're trying to get this accomplished, and I'm, it's, it's not fitting. It's not making sense in my head."
And so that's, that's, that's right behind that change where we want, we want that sixth, or that eighth grader working on their sixth grade credits in sixth grade if possible.
Right.
I mean, not if possible, that's the plan. But if, if they're missing, we can start recovering that as soon as possible rather than waiting till eighth grade.
Right.
Dr. Gullit.
Madam Chair, if I may, to, to Board Member Cummings' point, I mean, we have to do a better job of being more preventive in nature. We have to do a better job of that vertical articulation. It actually, the warning signs are already in elementary school, as, as most educators know.
Right.
And so the tracking, the monitoring, and the communication is essential to... is essential to get ahead of this and not be responsive. That's, I'll be very honest, it's a key part of our problem. And that's a key part of why our data is what it is. So, if we're going to move forward, and we're going to improve our student performance, get our students to graduate in a high-quality way, and improve their outcomes, we have to do this. This is a key part of that. But I would like to pause. Ms. Ingram, I don't want to put you on the spot, Dr. Livinggood, to talk about, you touched on a key piece of this work in the communication. Who's part of that team? What are the efforts going to be? So that the knowledge is there with our families, the engagement of our staff to make sure that they understand fully what's needed on their part, what we're doing to provide support and resources. Could you just touch on that briefly?
Yeah, so, first of all, we're not going to, we're not going to make this change overnight. This won't apply until at the end of next year for promotion, because we already have in place in the progression plan how promotion works this school year. So, that will give us time to sort of, to put this out. We really want to communicate this to parents and students at the beginning of the school year, how important it is that they are earning their credits throughout the year, sixth, seventh, every grade, and how those credits really follow you. Like, having to get all your core credits in middle school is a big burden to put on, you know, a sixth grader, but they need to know that that's what's expected of them. And then, as we go, we are bolstering our supports for credit recovery and grade forgiveness, and there's opportunities to make up credit when needed. But hopefully, a little bit of prevention will make those numbers smaller in the first place, and really allow us to do meaningful things for the students that are still in need of that recovery.
Chair. We'll go to Vice Chair, Reverend.
Thank you, and thank you very much for this presentation. Thank you for tackling the real issue. Because, in my mind, the real issue is not nearly as complex and messy as fixing the problem, you know, once it's established. You know, kids know from a very young age, families know from a very young age, that the best way to pass every class every single time is come to school on time every day, that you're not sick, to do your work while you're in class, and turn it in. That, to me, sounds a whole lot more simple than this mess that we are having to deal with. So, when I heard the part about the direct communication and support, if a kid is already in the situation that you just described, there's no point continuing to heap blame, you know? It is what it is, you know? You are where you are, Kat, so what do we do about it? But the prevention piece is so critical, to just finally, clearly, directly, with a lot of compassion, support, and guidance, get this right the first time. We'll save a lot of money and a lot of heartache and a lot of crime in this community. I'll just say it. Because when kids get off the track, it just spirals downward. So, I really appreciate this conversation. There's going to be donut hole kids, while this is coming to strength, that are going to continue to be difficult. But we need to have a lot more students that are not in this situation. So, thank you for your courage, and your bravery, and your commitment.
Thank you, Vice Chair, Reverend. And before Dr. James makes her next comments or questions, I'm just sitting here thinking of the predecessor school board member representing District One, and how she, I heard her repeatedly talk about social promotion in the elementary school grades, and how that was something that this district had, and this isn't for Ms. Riedel to even make a comment to. I'm not calling on elementary for you to make a comment. I'm making a statement that we, as a district, for many, many years, had social promotion and had students that did not belong in certain grades in the elementary school level. I am grateful to exactly what Vice Chair Thoreau was saying. It's unfortunate that it's taken to 23, 24 school year for us to eliminate social promotion in secondary. However, we've addressed the issue, we're attacking it, and we're absolutely going to eliminate social promotion. I understand, when they start getting older, it's really tough to, you know, keep kids that are certain ages in the grades that they need to pass before they can move on. But this holds a lot of people accountable, parents, students, educators, et cetera, the community. This holds a lot of people accountable, and it will change a lot of things for this district, and get us on the right track much faster, and for student success to be our driving force. So, thank you for addressing this need, Mr. Ingram, and to the team. Thank you very much. Dr. James? I just wanted to get one point of clarification that I think might speak to Reverend Cummings' points he was making. In middle school, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm going to use our canned education term of Plato Labs. Do we use Plato Labs in middle school? And are they used in place of elective opportunities, starting even in sixth grade, maybe seventh grade? And just to kind of speak to Reverend Cummings' point of that overwhelming sense of so much credit, we're, my understanding is we're replacing opportunities for electives with Plato Lab, or Credit Recovery Lab. So, a child, instead of having opportunity for band or whatever, would go to Credit Recovery Lab. So, they're still having designated time to work on that content. It's not as if it is a supplemental to their full credit load of six credits, and then they're doing homework to do credit recovery. They're having opportunity for that credit recovery during the school day. Is that correct?
Correct, and if a parent wants to make the decision to have the student do virtual for credit recovery, or that, like, that option is there, too, so the student can stay in band, if they're really invested in band, but they really struggled with math. There are some options for flexibility there, but schools are already doing this and doing their best. This is just going to call attention to the need to be doing it even more in sixth and seventh grade, so that we're not hitting that logjam in eighth grade.
So, question.
Reverend Cummings.
So, if that kid did not do well or fail, English, sixth grade English, I'm just playing, sixth grade English, and then they've been moved to seventh grade, they still got to get that sixth grade English. If they didn't get the foundations in sixth grade English, how are they going to do seventh grade English? Same thing with the math class, because math is progressive. So, how are they going to be successful at the next level if they have not gotten that before they start that next series, next course?
And that's where the need for summer recovery is really there, and we do. We have our fast-progress monitorings. We have a plan in place for a pre-assessment for our students, so our teachers can adjust a student need as well. Because at some point, the students will have to double dip and make up multiple courses at the same time, because every time you fail a course, you're compressing your time to be able to recover that course. So, we will, we will definitely have to address that need, too, of being able to meet the students where they are, because you will have some students who have not passed seventh grade math yet, who will be taking eighth grade math. And we do have that, and we have teachers that are flexible and meet their needs, too.
My final question was, does every middle school have a credit recovery lab? Yes? The average number of computers is no more than 25 or 30, right?
Typically, yeah.
Okay, so, my, as a matter of practice currently, those priority for those seats is given to eighth graders. Would that be an accurate statement?
Yes.
So, when we expand this plan and continue to prioritize even sixth graders and seventh graders, because that would be the proactive, instead of reactive, approach, which I can appreciate in this plan, my question is, what are we going to do? And this may be to you, or even to Dr. Gullett. What is our, what is our plan for expanding our credit recovery opportunities? Because I would, I would offer that probably every seat for a sixth-period or a seventh-period day is full in those credit recovery labs on every single middle school campus already. And so, while systematically, through Ms. Riedel and then up, we're going to systematically try to address this deficit, we still are, can be very cognizant of the fact that we're still going to have sixth graders who at January 1 are credit deficient from sixth grade semester 1. And if the intention is to put them into credit recovery and supplement for their elective, but we don't have a seat available to them, what, how are we going to address that? Because that looks like, from a board perspective, that's going to require, and Ms. Austin Ellis, an increase in allocation of computers, or funds, or classrooms, so that we can tackle this. Because I think that the plan is great, but if we don't have the finances behind it, and the space, because we have middle schools who, that don't have an extra room to put a computer lab into. So, and I may be getting way into the weeds for this particular conversation, and that's okay, and I'm fine to come back to it another time, but I think that there's a lot of weed-type questions to address here, because we're already probably pretty full in those credit recovery labs.
You said a lot, so let me, let me try to, let me try to respond. One, one thing, can I go back to Reverend Cummings' statement, too? I want to, I want to make sure that the board is aware that we have principals that are already making incredible decisions for the placement of these students every day. There are some situations where a student might be placed in a face-to-face entire sixth-grade schedule if they truly did fail all of sixth grade. Now, that really is a burden on our staffing plans, because we are not projecting that student to be included in the sixth-grade courses. We are projecting them to go into seventh grade, and that principal has hired, for instance, a life science teacher in English or middle school, seventh grade. So, that really is a burden, so we have to really be cognizant of that. But there are principals, if a student has, for whatever reason, been unsuccessful for the entire year or three out of four courses, they might be placed in a face-to-face class. I just want to make sure you are aware that there are principals that are quite aware of that, and know that that is the only way that student would be successful. To Dr. James, the students are really, really proficient using our Chromebook devices. They would rather use our Chromebook devices than even our large desktops. It's hard for us to imagine, because we are all accustomed to our large screens, but they're pretty good at it. So, we have space in other areas of the campus. We are already working with Dr. Gullett and Mrs. Talbert Irving on the plan for allocations, and how to support more students taking these credit recovery courses, because you said it really well. We know that we can't just allow 25 students each class period to take a course.
Well, and I think this could even speak to our unit allocation. So, most schools, I don't even know if on the staffing plan every school gets allocated a credit recovery lab technician. I know at the high school level, I think they do, but at the middle school, is that part of the staffing plan for middle schools? Or are they putting, like, a pair in there?
Well, even in high school, and our paraprofessionals are utilized in our credit recovery labs. But we are working with Dr. Gullett and Ms. Talbert for the unit allocations, for an expansion of those, because we know that we're going to have more students that need to recover courses.
Yeah, it's just not feasible to ask one adult to supervise and provide, not direct instruction, but certainly, remediation opportunities. One person, I mean, 25 is a lot, but to do, for more than that would be a huge ask, and not very productive, in my opinion. So, I think an additional, the board, or whoever, would need to consider additional units allocated to our middle school campuses in that paraprofessional or non-instructional category to make sure that they have the staff to appropriately meet the need that you guys are relaying in this progression plan.
And I'd just like to make one more comment. The disengagement that does come, although, and it starts in elementary, as everyone knows. But if we, if we have some of our disengaged sixth graders that we don't grab and really provide intervention for right away at that summer of sixth grade, or the beginning of seventh grade, it is only going to become more and more overwhelming to that student, and then they are never going to be successful when they enter high school. And that's where, in order for us to truly have effective citizens in our community, we really have to tackle this. And so, I appreciate your time today and the questions on this topic.
Vice Chair.
Thanks. Yes, we've certainly identified the problem, and now it is, the devil's always in the details of implementing and supporting, and making sure that the team that has committed themselves to changing this dynamic have what you need to pull it off, get it done, and let's get it behind us as much as possible, because it's, it's just no way for, for a kid to succeed. You know, the outcomes are just way, way, way too dangerous and dismal to keep doing things like this. So, to echo Dr. James, you know, money's always an issue. Finding the right people to support the heck out of these kids with helping them understand, you know, we don't want you to like this too much, because you need to, you know, they bond with you. But hopefully, they will see, and you guys are creating a program that is going to accelerate them through this very difficult patch, and help them on the track to where they're going to be a lot more successful, you know, moving forward. And so, I feel like what I'm hearing up here is that, you know, I'm certainly all in. I can't speak for the rest of the board, but we just, continuing to do it the other way is not getting it, you know? It's not, it's not right for kids, it's not right for the community, and it certainly isn't going to help us reach that A grade, or, you know, whatever the next standard is going to be. You know, I'll really be happy with my service on the board if we truly have, authentically have, a lot of students, a majority of students that are proficient. That's the end game.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Ms. Conrad?
Just as we talk about, as we're talking about prevention, and going back to elementary school a little bit, the numbers that I've heard early on for our third-grade non-proficiency is very high. And so, what plan, what are we looking at for that currently and in the future?
Yeah, third grade. For this year, we've added an additional assessment for Promotion for Cause for third grade, because that's something that our schools and our principals were asking for, because we are anticipating a very high number of third graders not passing the third-grade FAST assessment. So, we did, we were able to add an additional measure, and again, just focusing on those students with interventions during the school day, small-group instruction, after-school tutoring, summer opportunities that we are hoping they take advantage of, that you're going to be learning a little bit more about on April 6. And then, moving into the future, we're just constantly monitoring, what assessments are we going to be able to use? How are we going to provide appropriate interventions to these students? And how are we going to get them to progress to the next grade level? So, it's been on our radar all year, and we fielded a lot of questions from principals, and our department works very closely with student pathways and assessment. Mr. Allen's been doing a lot of work with this, with Ms. Brazington as well. So, we are very well aware of that, and we're doing everything we can to make sure that our third graders, first of all, have what they need, and, second of all, have plenty of opportunity to get to proficiency and show that they're ready to move on to fourth grade.
Okay, if we don't see a significant decrease in our numbers, do we have a plan for that? What's going to happen with all of those third-grade students?
So, we're going to, we're going to have a lot of third graders next year. And so, we do know that. We do have projected numbers right now, I don't have them with me, of students that we are looking at for retention. And obviously, it's significantly higher than it was last year. I mean, we know we're going to, we're going to have to have more third-grade classrooms, but again, we're going to do everything in our power to make sure that these kids get what they need, so that they're able to move on. So, we are on top of that situation, so we just want to make sure you guys are aware of that, and principals are as well.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Because as we are looking at prevention, you know, here, we're talking about upwards of 1,000 students that are, you know, that we've already identified, as they're not proficient. We have an opportunity right now, you know, to make sure that we're not socially promoting them, and that they get what they need before they move on. And so, I just, I personally feel we're at a turning point here to make success and make gains with these students. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Vice Chair.
Thanks. I'm not nearly, elementary is harder for me to follow. So, the reason why we have so many third graders this year is that related to the fact that we didn't have to, or, maybe you can just explain?
They were kindergartners during the pandemic.
It's COVID, yeah.
They were.
Yes, but wasn't there something about, like, we couldn't retain the ones that we felt really needed to be retained necessarily? really needed to be retained necessarily, right?
You're talking about this last year? We didn't retain? Is that what you're referring to?
I'm remembering, trying to remember back to which COVID year it was, where there was more choice to decide whether
Yes, the year we didn't have the assessment. 2020. We had no FSA assessment.
Right, so those kids automatically just rolled up, even though we had other data that would have
Some did, some didn't. We still had retentions that year, but we didn't have the state assessment to base it on that year.
And then was the family able to have more input that year as to whether or not
Yes, yes, in all grade levels. The family was able to have much more input in all of the grade levels in elementary that particular year.
So they could choose whether or not to have their student
There was a lot of flexibility for the families to decide, yes ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
I did want to say, I'm appreciative of this conversation that we're having with this progression plan because if we're going to really evoke a change, we can't keep doing the same thing that we've been doing. We can't keep doing the same thing and expecting a different outcome. That's just insane. So I'm grateful that you guys are coming up with some different plans, and hopefully this will bring about the change that we need as a district because we can't keep kicking the skin out of the road. So thank you guys for the presentation.
Yeah, thank you so much. The two quick points that I wanted to make, first of all, thank you to Ms. Conrad for bringing up those third graders because, as you all know, I had a third grader at that time, so I always am able to do the math as to how old certain children were at certain times. And so those kindergartners didn't get their last quarter of kindergarten work, whatever that looked like, and, you know, we didn't have those assessments. And then they went home, and what were they doing? We don't know. And then they all got to come to first grade, most likely, most of them, and then have continued to potentially struggle, some of those along the way. And so to your point, Ms. Conrad, that group, we're just going to follow these kids who were at certain very impactful years when the pandemic happened. And I know people in our community say, "Stop blaming things on the pandemic." However, it is a significant piece to the puzzle of academic success for some students within our district. So I'm grateful that we're continuing to address that. And I also wanted to say, I'm grateful, what Slide 13 says, where we're removing that a student must complete the requirement by the 10th day of the new school year, because that's just not reasonable any longer, and I'm grateful that we're removing that. Because say it's the 11th day, say it's the 20th day, whatever, and all of a sudden, you absolutely have to stay back in middle school or wherever you're going to be because you can't get promoted to high school. Thank you for the extended explanation on that and understanding that if they did get to high school, they have a certain number of seat hours they need there, too. So there is a little bit of timeframe, but it's not the 10th day. And so I'm grateful that we're able to eliminate that language, and just a lot of diligence has gone into the work that you all have done, from Ms. Talbert all the way down the totem pole in ensuring that academic success is going to be the top priority that we're putting here in this district and ensuring that we're addressing every layer and every level. Thank you to the work that you all have put in here. I, too, as Vice Chair said, I, too, am all in favor of getting us moving in the right direction, understanding we probably won't see Student Progression Plan Two of Two until maybe end of May, early June. I know that's not the typical timeframe we love to have on these kinds of things, but we do need to see what else the legislature is going to give us to add to our plan, so.
With that, if there's no additional board comment, is there any public comment on our student progression plan? Hearing none. Thank you so much to the team. We appreciate all the work that you've put in. Thank you, Mr. Ingram, Ms. Riedel, and Dr. Livinggood for being here with us today.
Thank you so much.
Dr. Gullett, we're on Item 5.1.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board, much like the conversation that we just had regarding the student progression plan, alternative learning is another one of those critical conversations that we need to have regarding what I describe as confronting our reality and getting to root issues to help ensure that our students get what they need. We're accountable for that and continued improvement in doing that and being agile to adapt to the needs. I couldn't agree more about the comments about the pandemic. We don't use that as an excuse, it's a reality, and we're moving forward, but we have to consider all conditions. Our school teams do a remarkable job every day, a remarkable job in adapting, and so as a system, we need to do a better job of providing options for our students. So thank you to Dr. Livinggood once again and the team who's going to present now some additional options as we adapt to meeting our students where they are. Thank you.
Okay, good morning again. Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Some of the presentation that I will share, we did just discuss. So I will make some adjustments as we move forward. I do want to make sure that Ms. Martinez-Lopez handed all the board members and, of course, Dr. Gullett, a folder that included updated data. Okay, thank you. We will refer to that data in a few slides, not quite yet. I just wanted to make sure everyone had that handy. So I am here today to provide you with an overview of our alternative learning, with the alternative learning options we have in Marion County. I have provided the folder for you to help you see some of our student discipline number counts a little clearer than you can on your computer. You will note the differences because of the updated dates, so we're going to refer to the ones you have when we get to that point. I would like to begin by showing you the plan for our overage eighth-grade students. We did just discuss that, but I don't want to dismiss a chart that I have prepared for you. This chart was, these student number counts reported at the end of February, so you, some of it might be a few numbers off, but this is, it's incredibly important for you to see the need that we have, and we don't need to rehash that because we all address that. We know that this is a need that we all need to address. The total number of our overage, and that's defined at 15 for our eighth-grade students that are more than five units deficient currently, is 232. You can see the breakdown by each school. Also, it's important to note that we already have students in what Mr. Ingram addressed earlier as our Ignite Academy. That has been a successful program for a few years, but it was always our intention to transition those students back into our base schools with the, again, like Dr. Gullett just said, we're not using this as an excuse, but the pandemic happened, and it did put some of our students at a greater disadvantage than others. And so we have, we've had to shift our plans to make sure that we're still providing those students with adequate instruction so they can quickly speed up to their peers. So on the chart, you will see that there is Ignite students at MTI currently, and there are Ignite students at SERMI. I will refer to that frequently as SERMI. It is defined as Silver River Mentoring and Instruction. It is one of our contracted learning sites. We currently have 38 students at the MTI site and 10 at the SERMI site. We have 17 students from the SERMI, I mean, excuse me, from the MTI location that will still need this plan moving forward. So those are, so really, if you want to do your math, you can update that number. Mr. Jones provided me with an update this week, and it is 17 that will still be classified in this category, if you would like to update your own records. So what we have planned for our overage students is to transition these students to our Marion County Acceleration Academy. As we saw yesterday with the ribbon-cutting ceremony, which was a lovely event, thank you all for attending, we have an opportunity in Marion County to provide our students that have been disengaged for whatever reason or are behind in their units or their credits, this opportunity to attend Acceleration Academy to hopefully gain the units they need to be able to enter back to their high school of their choice, if they apply for a choice academy or their regular base school. So our plan for this 23-24 year is to move to do an administrative placement for these students that we have defined, and we will place them at Acceleration Academies with transportation so they are able to recover the units in a non-traditional manner to hopefully move into the high school so they can be part of those graduation cohorts. We have, as we stated, defined those, thank you, Mr. Benny, we have defined those students, as we have said multiple times, defined at 15, but we will make adjustments accordingly like Dr. James referenced. If a student is close and they're already deficient a certain amount, those are really easy conversations to have with principals and guidance counselors and referrals to make sure we do what's right for all of our students. Our plan is that we will transition this first group, which are the 17 students that Mr. Jones provided me information on this week. Those students would be the first cohort to start this summer. So instead of having summer school here on the Marion Technical Institute campus, they would begin the transition, or they would begin the work at Acceleration Academy this summer. That will do a couple of things. That will really show us how successful they are in that setting. It will show us, we will make sure we get everything correct because they are going to add additional staff at Acceleration Academy to accommodate our need. And so we're going to make sure that we get these 17 students started first, and then we will move the other students to begin in August. The contract for Acceleration Academy will not be, will not need to be amended. It is already approved as an eighth, grade eight through 12th grade school site. So we did not need to do an amendment to that contract. Are there any questions about the overage students before, I don't want to move on, even though we've already had a lot of conversation about that?
I do.
Yes, sir.
So you're saying that we want to put these current students at Acceleration Academy this summer for summer school? Is, we were there yesterday, is that set up for that to happen?
Yes, sir.
We're talking about the 8.5 kids, correct?
The 17 this summer. Yes, sir. We have, we have been working with the executive directors and their school director, which is Mr. Wayne Livingston. They, we've worked on exactly what these students already need. Mr. Jones has provided me their transcripts and their courses that they need. They have the space to accommodate these 17 students this summer.
I can share that.
To be the case, because I was over there and had a chance to walk the area and talk a little bit about what that might look like. Acceleration Academy has become a, it's basically become my school. I checked the address, it's in my district, so I adopted them. Good. And so, yeah, because there was a lot of people in the big room yesterday, and there is, we want to make sure that the care is given to these younger kids and that they're in a good spot, too.
But I thought they were saying something about knocking a wall down or something. My concern is, are we going to be able to get that work done? I mean, we're a few months away. Are we going to be able to get that work done and be able to have those kids there?
They won't need to, they won't need to expand their facility for the summer enrollment students. The conversation is if they purchase the adjacent office space
Right.
That is 6,400 square feet, they would then do a build-out to allow them more space. But that would not need to happen before our summer school session. Dr. Gullett, oh, did you want to speak to that?
No, no. Yes, you covered that. I was going to say, Dr. Livingston, the summer, because they're 17, the wall being knocked down was about anticipating the future numbers, correct?
Yes, ma'am. And there are other rooms inside that, they're in a space right now, that is 8,200 square feet. So they have a large space, and it's just amazing what you can do with an open floor plan, as you all saw, and so they do have space.
Yes, Dr. James. So just to be clear, because I can, I think I understand what Reverend Cummings is getting at. If I am a 15-year-old who is going to be there this summer, presumably, I'm in the same room with a 22-year-old.
Yes, and Mr. Livingston, we have spoken in detail about that. This model is already in place, working really well in St. Lucie County. That is where our advice has come from because they have a very successful model that they have had in operation for six years now, and they do a really good job separating those students into different, almost cohorts within that facility to ensure proper supervision takes place at all times. It also is important to note that they have and they are fully prepared to hire, they call them graduate candidate assistants, and those GCAs, they are prepared to hire more to help the middle school students succeed.
Okay, I just think it would be important to make sure that we're transparent with the community about what those safeguards look like so that we can ensure that this will be an appropriate place for the students to go. That would just be my only recommendation, and I think that's kind of what Reverend Cummings was getting at.
Mine, too.
Okay. We'll make that clear. Thank you, Dr. James and Reverend Cummings.
And I'll say, I'm really glad that we're starting with 17 in the summer. We've done that with other programs to transition kids in, and it has made a huge difference in terms of their success. So I'm much more comfortable with doing it that way and, again, communicating it out appropriately than waiting till the fall to try to.
And we really hope, as Mr. Ingram stated earlier, we just began this night school opportunity. That's a huge opportunity for our students. We have teachers at each school site that there, they have applied for these positions, and their focus is to work with these students online, so any student can log in to do so. We have computers available for them, and they can log in and receive assistance through the credit recovery process. So we're really looking forward to seeing some success in credits earned through that option, as well as we, students recover more units in the last nine weeks of school than they do all year. So we're looking for those numbers definitely to be decreased by the end of the summer.
Thank you, Dr. Livinggood. And without seeing the transcripts and all that you've seen of these 17 students, do you anticipate that there is potential that in the summer, that some of these 17 students actually can get caught up? Or do we believe that these 17 will probably also be with us in the fall?
They, I have seen the transcripts. Mr. Jones provided a very detailed report for me. There is a possibility that some of the students can be finished and actually move on in August. Definitely, they can all be finished by January.
Thank you very much. Any other questions on that portion of our conversation? Okay, moving on.
Okay. All right. I'd like to now speak to our alternative learning expansion. We have been asked to explore options for our, for our alternative learning options here in Marion County, to explore what we have available, how well the programs are working, and what we can do differently to increase our student success at these school sites, or even bringing more of these students back to our Marion County Public Schools umbrella. And so I have a lot of data for you. I am available for questions afterwards, but I want to go through the way that I have broken apart this for our conversation today. I have provided information to possibly split our student behaviors by egregious and non-aggregious. So before I do that, I want to give an overview of, right now, we have a contract with SERMI and New Leaf that I believe we're all familiar with. Our SERMI students serve our, our SERMI administrators serve our non-ESC students, seventh through 12th grade. Our New Leaf site serves our gen ed, K through sixth grade, and ESC, seven through 12. So I believe I summarized that. So keep in mind, when I refer to New Leaf and SERMI, those are, that's the description. So currently, we send So currently, we send students based on an alternative placement or an expulsion recommendation to a temporary setting at one of those sites until the case comes before the board for board approval. We have an extra high number of referrals this year, and I want to just remind you of why. We had to remove our drug diversion program this year, because we did not have an equitable program for all students. We have a plan to correct that for the, for the upcoming year. So we do not anticipate our drug offenses, if you look on your chart, you will see we had over 175 students that were alternatively placed for drugs. You will, that number will decrease next year, because we are working with the hospital district to provide regional drug diversion sites that our students will be able to participate in, in lieu of an alternative placement. So keep that in the back of your mind, if you don't mind, because that will drastically change our numbers. Our, the numbers that you have, I have separated for you based on non-aggregious and egregious. The plan would be for us to take this first year, 80 students from our CERMI site, 80 of the students that had a non-aggregious behavior from the CERMI site. The PowerPoint does reflect a different number, but in conversation with our CERMI and New Leaf, New Leaf Executive Director, I have adjusted that plan to make sure that we do things right, like Ms. Thoreau just said, and that we actually look at a small group of students and to make sure we have all of, everything correct before we take on a larger amount of students. So the plan is that this next year, we would move the 80 non-aggregious students from CERMI, and we would have our own house facility here and within Marion County Public Schools. And so I want to show you what some of these data points look like. If you look at your chart, it says student discipline data as of February 20th on the screen, but you will see an updated one in your packet. It's important to note that we have had 482 placements at the end of quarter three. That's a total placement number count. The next page, you will see that we have, I did a behavior types chart. There were a couple disciplined behaviors that I initially categorized, and this, that now is changed. So look at your hard copy paper, and you will see that for egregious behaviors, I, which are the most severe behaviors, including our felony charges and our felony transfers, I have now re-categorized those and calculated those to be a total of 320 egregious behaviors. And you can see on your chart the description of what those egregious behaviors would be. On the next slide, you will see that I have calculated for you non-aggregious behaviors. These are behaviors that, of course, are a violation of our code of student conduct, but not as aggressive or egregious as the non-aggregious ones. The total for these non-aggregious behaviors is 269, which does include that 175 number count that I provided to you for drugs. So you can see that the majority of our offenses that we are alternatively placing, and when I say that, that includes our students that have been expelled, they are egregious behaviors. It's important just to keep in mind. The non-aggregious categories I have, you have that in a chart form as well, so you can see what I have classified, when I say I, the student discipline team, I apologize, that we have calculated would be best served in that non-aggregious category. So in the next slide, we have a total enrollment for both categories. So when we're looking at students that we already know have been placed based on current infractions, we already have, you've already done a board approval for these students to return at the first, at the end of the first quarter for CERMI and New Leaf next year. You will see that we have, following that plan I just told you, we would have 37 for the egregious, 45 for the new, New Leaf, and then 90 for the Marion County site. So that number also is flexible, but that's just an, for you to have an idea of what would happen right now with the students that we already know are coming our way and need a placement for August. So this is, this is what our current agreement with CERMI and New Leaf entails. We know that the contract ends on June 30th, 2024. We know that it expires at that time, and it includes $4 million. It's also, make a note, though, that that transportation is tied to New Leaf. That transportation, so it really is embedded under that New Leaf. So the, the plan that I just stated, with us moving 80 students from the non-aggregious behavior types from the CERMI site, does not affect anything with the New Leaf location. New Leaf would continue to receive students, K6, Gen Ed, and they would continue to receive all our ESC students that have been alternatively placed 7th through 12th. So this plan would be a reduction of 248,855, because the operational cost for the contracted sites will not change. For instance, they still have to rent the facility, they still have operational costs, but it would be a reduction with their personnel expenses and their academic supplies. So what we're looking at with that, would we would reduce their contract to 1.8 million, and that would be for the 80 students that we would then take in as a Marion County Public School alternative learning site. The, and again, those numbers are a little different, but that's what I just stated. I changed some things based on the 80 students instead of the 150. So it would be 1.8, and it would be a reduction of that 248,000. This is just important to note, but I definitely want you to know that I've spoken with our chief financial officer, Ms. Boston Ellis, and she assured me she would help me if there were any budgeting questions that did come up. But it is, I don't want to imply that this is saving our district any money, because that's not the intention of this. The intention is to make sure that the students are receiving the most support possible for the behaviors that they have, and to ensure that the academic focus is there, no matter their reason or their mistake that led them to the alternative learning site. So it's important to note that I'm not trying to say that this is cost neutral, this is not a cost savings, but it is what we're trying to explore, what we were asked to do, and look for alternate ways to serve our students in our alternative learning sites. If we, if we had 80 students at an alternative learning site, we would have parent, we would have a parent meeting, we would have notification, we would give clear direction, what that would look like to our parents and students for transportation. We would also have personnel that would serve our students. What I have proposed on this sheet is we would have a principal, a dean, a guidance counselor. We would still have eight teaching units, or I, let me say, units, because we could vary those from non-instructional to instructional units. We would still need some exceptional student education, inclusion teachers. We would also need a secretary, a homeschool liaison, and a healthcare assistant to take care of any students that needed additional support. We have, our goal would be to absorb the units that have been cut already in our staffing plans within our district, to absorb these, these personnel to assist in our alternative learning sites. So at this time, Dr. Gullett, I, I will turn it over to you to ask for questions.
Thank you, Dr. Livinggood. I think you've provided a lot of data, and I appreciate, again, your work. You've, you've been quite productive in seeking all financial data, student behavior, appreciate that. Board, what I would say is, Dr. Livinggood touched on this, meeting the students where they are and looking at their academic needs, and how best to ensure that we provide the appropriate resources to the students. And I think that this is the best model for addressing our students' needs. We have the ability to do this, and I think that this is an important piece of, moving us forward to provide essential support academically, socially, emotionally, behaviorally. So I look forward to your feedback. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Board, I'm actually going to start this one. I know normally I go to you all for, for comments and questions, but because I continue to be the board member who's expressed multiple times in my public comment that I'm interested in the district exploring alternatives to our alternative learning options. I want to start with saying that we appreciate the partnerships that we have had with the external entities that have provided services for us. In my opinion, and this is speaking solely as a board member, not as the board chair, solely as a board member, while I appreciate those partnerships, they aren't incredibly built for student success in mind. There's not requirements in the contract that says students have to attend a certain number of days. There's not requirements within those contracts that says that certain grades have to be met. Certainly, it's on the student's onus to, to try to meet all of the qualifications and so forth, but it is possible that we can alternatively place a student for 45 days that never actually attends one of our alternative placement sites in the current model that we have, and that is not contributing to student success. As Dr. Livinggood and I talked about this quite a bit yesterday, I appreciate the model that we're exploring potentially. I do disagree with the personnel, as we talked about it a bit yesterday. I don't believe that an alternative site at Marion County Public Schools needs a principal. The intention is not to create a school. In my opinion, again, this is all, speaking as board member Allison Campbell, this is not a school that we're creating at all. This needs to be an alternative. Some of these students are going to be there for 45 days, and it's going to be a fluctuating enrollment. I see potentially an AP of curriculum, who is ensuring and they're maintaining and looking at student records as they're coming in and coming out, but these students belong to a base school. Regardless of whether they're expelled for a year, they belong to a base school, they have a principal. And so that, that principal at their base school needs to also be ensuring that they're monitoring that student's progress that ultimately does impact their school grade as well. So I disagree with having a principal in this setting. I understand having a dean, because we need to have some discipline function, as well as the general education unit, you and I talked about that. The instructional, the instructional value that is needed for these students that have made discipline infraction, have discipline infractions on their record, that's what we're looking for. And so absolutely, however we can provide that instructional unit, if it's instructional, non-instructional, whatever that looks like, it's very valuable that whatever this alternative option, should the board choose to move in this direction, including, included in Marion County Public Schools, is very heavy academic focus. That's why I say an AP of curriculum, or even an AP of instruction instead, something like that. It has to be very, very heavy academic focused. That's not to say that what the current arrangement is, they don't have great teachers and great staff providing great services. I don't want to ever make it sound as if that's not what's happening, because they do. They have great teachers, invested teachers, doing exactly what needs to be done for the students that go to school. But we know that currently in that model, we have a significant number of students that are choosing not to go. Even if we've alternative placed them, we've approved them, even if we've approved them for expulsion, they may not ever set foot over there. So the great teachers that are in place over there doing great work never actually see the students that actually need the most support. So that is why, in part, why, and I may have additional comments as the board expresses their opinion, but I, I wanted to express my own personal comments first, because I know I have been a very vocal board member, interested in what the district could bring forth to us, to start putting academics first for students who also have discipline infractions. And so I'm grateful for this continued conversation and to see where my fellow board members fall. Obviously, this is a work session to discuss. Perhaps the other board members are not interested in going this, in that direction, and I appreciate what that might look like as well, and I'm aware that we might land in, in a different position than where I stand. But as an individual board member, I believe this is the direction we need to be moving in, and certainly with some tweaks to how that might look, but I appreciate the work that you put into this, Dr. Livinggood, and where you're trying to get us.
Thank you.
For student success.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Board, I will open it up to Dr. James as the first hand I saw.
So I have a few clarifying questions. To understand the process, are only students from CERMI going to be reallocated to here, or would students from New Leaf also be reallocated to?
No, it's, it's important for us to make sure that these 80 students have the most support possible, and we do that really well. And so we would not bring in the ESC students that are 712, that have been assigned to New Leaf. This would only be our non-aggregious students that have been referred to our CERMI site.
So then I want to draw a question to why we're allocating to ESC units to the site if there would be no ESC students attending?
Okay. Because we still have some students that have been assigned to CERMI for, that might have an IEP based on consultation. They have different, different, they might be a gifted student, they might be just consult, and so it would be important to have those in our plan.
I would just maybe draw a question, too. Do we need two full units? If, if our average ESC teacher carries a caseload of 20, 30, 40 kids at a general education K-12 site we have, then I would just argue there probably isn't a need for two ESC units at a site that presumably doesn't have any ESC students. That would just be something I would bring awareness to. If we are taking these 80 students from CERMI, I, while I understand CERMI is outside of Marion County Public Schools, as Ms. Campbell spoke to their quality of delivery and instruction, is there an opportunity for us to have a conversation with CERMI to potentially encourage those staff members who may see, they may, I'm assuming, would have a reduction in staff? If we're, if we're taking 80 students, there would be some level of reduction in staff at CERMI? Have we bridged over, maybe for them to be able to apply within Marion County Public Schools and come work for us in our own program we're creating?
Mr. Nadebesnik is here, and he has, I have had this conversation with him, and he has spoken with his teachers. He, he is aware, of course, that this would be a reduction of possibly four staff members.
Okay. I want to speak to, so I want to first say I'm a very big advocate of this plan. I believe wholeheartedly that separating egregious and non-aggregious discipline infractions and where those children go to serve that time, whatever it is, 45 days or a year and a half, is very important to me as a board member. As I'm just reflecting back on some of the off-air conversations we've had with families returning to base early, or requesting to not be placed at CERMI or New Leaf in general, and, and the reoccurring narrative I heard was that they are afraid for their students, and, and forgive me, I'm just ad-libbing, but afraid for their students to go to a place where they may encounter more criminal-like behavior than their child would have maybe been present and aware of previous to their placement at CERMI or New Leaf. So I think creating this site within Marion County Public Schools that houses our non-aggregious offenses is more than appropriate, and the time is more than now to make it happen. So I'm in full support of the plan. I'm going to disagree with Ms. Campbell. I think the intention here should be and is to create an alternative site. I think that our, there is a need for a principal. Ms. Talbert Irving worked at, ran a center school, worked at a center school, right? Okay, so I, having spent some time in center schools myself, I think that it is very important that you have a leader who is leading with the intention of remediation and course correction and creating a plan for return, whether that is 45 days or whether that is a school year and a half. It is very important.
year and a half. It is very important for that leader to lead with the purpose of creating a plan for that child to make it back to their base school. So I do think that it should be a school. I think that I would ask questions to you or Ms. Talbert Irving about whether we would have a school code, what that would look like for testing purposes, et cetera, because currently all of those performance rolls back to base schools because it's at Sermi or New Leaf. So I would ask, that would be a question that doesn't have to be answered now, but certainly would be a question I would have. But remediation and course correction requires quality leadership and I think it would take the right principal, not just any principal, but the right principal to lead that charge and develop a culture where when parents hear that their child is placed there, they look forward to it as an opportunity for their child to not only get their behavior remediated, but also have opportunities for enrichment, opportunities for academics to get caught up on some credits and put them in the right frame of mind for their return to their base school. So I think we're all trending in the right direction, at least Ms. Campbell and I are, in that we agree with the idea. I think that it's important for me that it is treated as a school that is ran like a school so that we can give it the respect it needs, in my opinion, to be successful.
I'm Chair.
Attorney Powers has something to add to that really quick.
If I may, just that will also, in keeping with that conversation, there will need to be discussions regarding staffing with SRO, school nursing perhaps, other staff that are required if we have a separate site, so.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Reverend Cummings.
And thank you, Dr. Livinggood, for this presentation. You and I had some conversations the other day and I kind of shared some of my concerns with this. And looking at the staffing plan, one of the things that kind of jumps out at me is the gen education units. So you kind of addressed it a little bit. You said that you kind of had some conversation with Sermi and possibly getting some staff because this late in the game, it's going to be kind of hard to get staff, you know, those teachers, because folks are trying to make preparation for next year. So I want to know if there's a plan, other than looking at Sermi's current staff, if they're willing to transfer over, is there going to be some plan to get that? Because I know that there's schools right now that's currently having issues getting teachers.
And I think it's important that we focus with the academic focus and we would include that in our recruitment efforts for hiring the right teachers for that spot or those positions because it has to be an academically focused personnel that is hired for each position. Because if we do this, this has to be a flagship alternative learning opportunity. And so we will include those, those will be our filters when we're hiring the personnel for it.
I just wouldn't want us to put whomever that's in charge of this school in a bind with trying to scramble to fill educational units and people, they're not there. And then we just end up putting someone in a position to say that we fill that unit. To me, these units don't, you can't put a sub in there. You can't put a permanent sub in there. You have to put, like you just said, someone that is equipped to deal with this type of student in this type of environment, knowing that there's a different type of mission with this school. Also, Attorney Powers hit it before I did with the SRO and the nursing because if this is what it's going to look like, you have to have all those things in place for it. I agree that we do need to probably do something, we need to do something, not probably, we need to do something. Because oftentimes when I hear these alt placements, they don't want to send their kids to Sermi or to New Leaf. They feel like it's going to make their kid, it's going to put their kid in a worse situation. So this is a great option. I too, I too agree that the school would need a principal. And the reason I say that, to put an assistant principal there for instructional curriculum, you're asking that person to deal with the academic, you're asking them to deal with the discipline, you're asking them to deal with the curriculum, and that person should not be an AP, that person should be a principal because they need to build the culture of that school. And yes, these kids do have a base school. I agree with you, Chair Campbell, they do have a base school, but because of them being at this school, we need to quit toggling kids back and forth between schools in such a way that parents don't know, do I talk to the base school or do I talk to this school? And it creates so much confusion with the parents in that situation. Having a principal there, that person that they can reach to, that's where I see it. I actually like the plan. I'm concerned about where, I shared this with you the other day, where this site would be. I'm not for this site being at a elementary school. I'll put it on record right now, not afford them. Not, if it's going to be somewhere, let it be here. I'll go ahead and say that now. If it's going to be somewhere, let it be here because we're branding that situation for something different and that's, we need it. We need this.
Ms. Conrad.
Dr. Livinggood, I want to thank you for your work. I think I'm in full support. I think that we desperately need something like this in Marion County. Along with what other board members have mentioned as far as having good leadership, one of my biggest concerns of looking at this is also getting the general ed units because you would need a special kind of teacher. You need eight special kinds of teachers to do this kind of job. And so as you're recruiting, are we incentivizing for these positions at all in our recruitment or will we? Is that a possibility?
We have not had that conversation. We wanted to speak, we wanted to share this and have this discussion with the board before we moved forward with incentivizing any positions.
I just, I think it's important as we look at getting quality instruction. You know, I think every board member has shared that as we make, as we look at making this change, that solid instructional practices are important to all of us. And so to get solid, outstanding, highly effective teachers in this place of need is going to be a difficult task. And as we move forward, we need to be thinking about how we're going to recruit those type of teachers. So I am in full support. I think it's a great plan, but that is a concern that I have as we have so many openings already at our regular school sites that we can help support to make sure we have good instruction for these students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Conrad.
Vice Chair.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the vision. We know this has been needed for a long time. I want to tip my hat to, I still want to call you Coach Nabeznik, Coach, one of our boys in baseball, Mr. Nabeznik and Katie over there at New Leaf. You have valiantly and continue to valiantly serve a really difficult population. And there was talk years ago of just doing it all ourselves, taking it all under our umbrella. I'm much more comfortable with this model. It is a divide and conquer mentality. You know, we have a lot of kids with a lot of needs and moving in a direction, just like with Acceleration Academies, you know, to become more targeted and strategic and what do the kids really need? You know, what are these groups of kids really needing? And how can we also then protect them from continuing to go down a very bad path? And I too have heard too many times that the student didn't go anywhere because they weren't really going to be, and the family knew it too. They just weren't willing to send them to an alternative site, knowing that online was not going to meet their needs. So now the kids missed another, however, many days. So huge need for this, I agree. Couple of tactical questions. When would this need to go on the board agenda?
Very soon.
That's kind of what I figured. Okay.
Like Tuesday.
Yeah. All right. The transition piece for our kids is huge and I'm thinking about the whole principal possibility. What's most needed, in my view, for these kids is for them to have the opportunity, and also Sermi and New Leaf, that transition is everything. And if the person that is running this program, first of all, is going to legitimize what we're doing to have a high, have high-level leadership, you know? There are gems of people that without a principal title that could walk in and do this work. They're gems, they're unicorns, they're amazing. But if we're going to commit to this, then I do feel like the framework needs to be commensurate. And it's always about getting the right people, isn't it? And it would be my expectation that the principal of this opportunity would be in very close communication with the principals of the students where they would be transitioning back to. Because that's where students fall, you know, that there's, if there is a weak link in the chain for kids that have a lot of needs, then it doesn't turn out nearly as well. I also am being mindful of, it's important for the people that are closest to the work to propose the decisions to us, to propose the rationale. And I want to be amenable, you know, to that. You guys have been put in these positions for all the right reasons. So unless I can think of a big reason not to support it, I'm going to support it. The ESE question, you were waiting for that, weren't you? When it comes to ESE, you know, yes, we have kids on consult, we have kids that are gifted. We also have kids that are on support facilitation. We have kids that would really benefit from co-teach. We have kids that are self-contained EBD, you know, that maybe have not committed a very egregious offense but are certainly used to being in very closely held situations. So again, I feel like you have a reason for requesting two units and there's always going to be comparison made, comparisons made, you know, from schools. Like, I'll just say, for example, you know, incentivizing our transformation schools that, you know, we're, we have always offered more money. And even offering more money, you still can't get. It's not very easy to get people to fill those positions. So, you know, comparison only goes so far. I think that we have a new program to run. I think that we need to support it and I'm ready to go with what you're proposing. The only area that I would ask about is, kids are being put here for a reason and they do have probably multi-layers of issues. So I'm thinking about our social workers and our social work assistants that are already stretched and I understand that. But is there an opportunity for them? You know, you have one guidance counselor, 80 kids. I know that sounds really small compared to the hundreds of others. But again, this is a specialized program. And hopefully, the lower numbers will attract the people that we know we need to make this go so that these kids can dust off and get themselves right and go do it in a bigger space, like the world. All right, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Thoreau.
Dr. James?
I just had a few clarifying questions. On slide nine, you define a non-aggregious behavior as drugs, elopement, and sexual offenses. Look at your.
I corrected that.
Okay.
It's in your folder.
I corrected that after conversations with you board members. Thank you for that. And the executive cabinet team, we adjusted that. We moved the sexual offenses, even if it is consensual, we moved it to the egregious category.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to confirm.
Yes, ma'am.
Attorney whispered in my ear.
But thank you for making that clear on record.
I want to speak to the eight instructional units and you defined, you don't define them as instructional. You defined them a different way on the slide. So I want to make a clarification that I think, you called them general education units. You're going to be using Edgenuity as the instructional method, right?
The courseware platform, yes.
So those are certified teachers within the platform. So these education units do not theoretically have to be highly qualified, highly educated teachers, but in fact, could be even non-instructional units. They are, they are providing support, but Edgenuity is the delivery model for the instruction. Is that correct?
Yes, we can use that model. That's called the instructional services side of Edgenuity under the big umbrella of Imagine Learning. Our goal would be, though, to have four and four. One instructional unit for every class and one paraprofessional because we do know that we have to have targeted interventions and we have to have that support. But if we could not provide that, Dr. James, you are correct, we could use the instructional services side that Edgenuity does provide.
Okay. And then I just want to clarify something that board member Thoreau said. A self-contained EBD student, if they were alt-placed because it was not a manifestation of their disability, would go to New Leaf no matter what. Is that correct?
They would, for this year, this model, they would remain at New Leaf and would receive the services at New Leaf.
So the only types of ESE students who would attend this new model would be really a student on consult.
Consult.
Not receiving direct services, not a student with support facilitation.
Correct.
It would only be a student on consult.
Correct.
Okay. I just thought that was important to clarify.
And the reason we have that is because we know that New Leaf has the support necessary for those students that Ms. Thoreau mentioned. They have the counseling, they have the SRO for that small school site, they have the therapy necessary. And so we want to make sure that until we see all the success that we know we're going to see with these 80 students, that we allow those students to receive their services at New Leaf.
Because I understand, I think, what Ms. Thoreau is getting at. I think it would be, and I like the case study idea, like we were talking about with Acceleration Academy, but I would like to see non-aggregious offenders who are ESE have the opportunity to attend this instead of going into that environment that may have more egregious behaviors at New Leaf. So I understand that for sure. I just think that is not part of this plan as it presents itself for this next school year.
For August 23, 24. Ms. Thoreau, I think we're going to respond.
Okay, that's a really important clarification because I don't see anything on here that says non-aggregious but not ESE.
Right.
I'm sorry, Ms. Thoreau. Say that, what was your question?
An ESE student can have a non-aggregious, you know, issue.
Yes.
So therefore, I feel like what I'm hearing is, even if it's non-aggregious, they're still going to New Leaf if they're ESE.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
For this, for this current model, for starting in August.
Because, why?
Because of, we're now in March, we want to make sure that we have the 80 students and we show success and we provide them, because they need more than the traditional student. We already know that they've made a bad choice. They need that intervention. They more than likely might be behind in a unit if male school or credit if it's high school. So we want to make sure that we provide them the most support possible.
So at this time, we're not, we wouldn't be, with this late game, late stage in the game, to bring them on in August would not be advisable considering their needs.
Well, we could, we could do it, but the conversation that I've had with Mr. Nabeznik and Mr. Neeb is, when I first proposed this, I explained to them basically splitting their contract, splitting and taking half of the students, and that's what you will see in one of the slides. But through conversation of exactly what all is involved in the services for the students at New Leaf, we, we had a good discussion about, let's, for this first model, phase one, let's let New Leaf continue with their services. And then we would support the students at our MCPS, Alternative Learning Site, the non-ESE students that do not need the direct services such as inclusion or self-contained service.
It would be like a phase-in process.
Yes, sir. Their contract, we have a contract with them until June 30 of 2024, which we know will need to be amended this year to go in that direction. But at the end of next year, they will need to go through the rebidding process if we do pursue to continue with contracted sites for alternative learning.
And I get that. I'm sorry. I get that. Because if we're going to do this, I really want us to make sure that we do it right and get it right the first time and not have so much expectation of success on all those different levels. so much expectation of success on all those different levels that we miss it because we put too much in all at one time, so, I do get that, so thank you.
Vice Chair.
I'm sorry.
No, it's fine, you may be saying what I'm about to say, go ahead.
My ask would be to consider each student as an individual.
Okay.
I understand 100% the importance of launching this right and, and being strategic, but let's remember what we're doing it for in the first place.
And Vice Chair Thor was, was kind of saying exactly, she said it much more eloquently than I was about to say. I, I don't like the idea of tying us to contract language that would say, a student with an IEP that pulls a false fire alarm absolutely has to go somewhere where a felony offender is. I don't like that, that's exactly opposite of what we're trying to get to. She said it much more eloquently than I did, that we need to look at each student. So, Attorney Powers, as we pursue this amendment to this contract, my recommendation, and this is singular board member, would be that we ensure that we don't tie ourselves so tightly that we're not looking at each individual student, and if we do have allocation for ESE units in this potential alternative environment, we would have the ability to service needs of some students that may be in those non-aggressive that are serviced by IEPs. Dr. Gullett?
Madam Chair, thank you. Before, I know you are speaking to the attorney, I will tell you, the superintendent of schools, my goal is this to be inclusive and to meet the students where they are. And I think that, as you see today, this is the first time you're seeing this, we're having discussion. Operationally, there, there are some adjustment and fluidity that needs to occur as we look at each case individually. And I will tell you that I think, as we talk about the egregious versus non-aggressive, and what's practical and logical will prevail. So, my expectation will be with the language that if we can meet those students and say, just to your example, which was well said, that student would best be served here. That would be my intent, and I think that's workable. That's part of this, this is going to be a process of operationally saying, okay, we can manage this part, we're not right, we're not ready for this part, but, but absolutely. That's the full intent of what this is about.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett, for that clarification. I know that certainly this is going to be a transition for the partners that we've had for quite some time, but our purpose for all of us is to ensure student success, and that's every student. And to just say that we potentially would still send every student with IEP to an alternative site that is potentially not the most appropriate if we have a different location for them, we just have to be careful in how that contract language is, is written, so I know Attorney Powers is hearing us and, and what that thought is. Dr. James? Does edgenuity employ or roll out ESE teachers within their platform?
Dr. James, I'd have to actually look at each teacher individually. We do receive rosters, of course, of those teachers, so I don't know if the teacher of record, if we chose the instructional services side, would be an ESE teacher, but there are accommodations that are embedded into the courseware for that part of it.
Okay, I'm just thinking about ESE minutes and directed instruction minutes and those requirements in IEPs, so, in my mind, I'm wondering if we could say that at the semester, because oftentimes our, and correct me if I'm wrong, but our placements somewhat roll on semester terms, is that correct?
Forty-five or a semester, depending on the offense.
So, I'm just wondering if we are, if, if as a board, it would be acceptable for us to think that we start with our 80 non-aggressive, general education students with the intention that at Christmas, we are going to reassess and potentially start maybe new placements? So, maybe the students who are already placed at New Leaf, we are staying there, but then we start to acknowledge that we're going to start new placements, we're going to, and it's a slower roll into our own site instead of a mass influx as a way to ensure that we are providing the best service? Because I do, I do think that it could be perceived as inequitable in, in-
Right.
-in doing this. And I'm, I, I hadn't, when we discussed it, it didn't, it didn't look that way to me, but in conversation, I do believe that there is absolutely the perception, at a minimum, that this could be inequitable to ESE students, and I think that it's important that we at least acknowledge that part of the conversation with, with a well-scripted plan as to how we will accommodate them into this new site. Because I think that, as a parent, as the example that Chair Campbell just gave, just because my child is ESE, I don't get the same opportunity if they pull the fire alarm, and that is a problem for me. So, I, I think that I, as a board member, would like to see draft two, I dare say, at least some kind of conversation around how we could accommodate the ESE students, what that plan would look like. I see a lot of numbers on here, and I don't, I'm sorry, I'm confused, because when I look at non-aggressive at SERMI, it's 204, but we're talking about 80 students, and so I'm, I guess I missed the part where we identified the 80 versus the 204? It's Slide, hang on, it's Slide 11, I believe, because it's the, the number that actually will be with us in 23, 24. Okay. Is that what it is? It's the 90. Because we have a certain number of students that are there right now. Yeah, they're going to tap out at the end of the school year.
Yes, but that's when I made a note, that we made an adjustment on those, since this was uploaded to Board Docs for public seven days prior, we have had adjustments. So, that's why it's important to look at, for total number counts, this colored chart that you were provided. So, what are you, what are you questioning? What would the exact breakdown be?
Well, I'm wondering how, my, my question is, how many, how many kids is it? How many non-aggressive New Leaf kids would it be if we said, let's bring them all?
Sixty-five.
If it's this one, is it this one right here that we're looking at, right under the blue bar? Is that what you're, where it shows referred to New Leaf or alternative placement?
This one, it's 65.
No, this chart that you're looking at right here that has the yellow bar at the very top, this is what we have currently placed this year.
Yes.
Right.
This is current. In the PowerPoint, there's a slide, let me get to it.
Slide 11, I think.
There's a slide.
That says the projected 23, 24 school year.
Right there. So, that would be, that was, that would be right now, based on our numbers, what it would look like if we, and that says 90, so then we kind of moved that down since this was posted. But, so your New Leaf group, and we'd have to take out the K6, that's another conversation, because they service all of our Gen Ed K6 students. So, I'd have to provide you an updated number of the non-aggressive 712 students that are currently, that would be placed at New Leaf for next year. I'd have to give you the updated number.
So, we'd be looking at that 60, that column that says 65, minus the K through 6.
I don't think, I don't know, I don't think that you're, I'm sorry.
I mean-
I'm also just confused in general, because this is 23, 24 school year projected for egregious, so where is the projected for non-aggressive? Because that's the- It's the MCPS site, so you've got the SERMI, the New Leaf, and then you, the MCPS site is the non-aggressive. So, the MCPS site TBD, which, the 90, which is now 80-ish, whatever, is, those are all coming from SERMI. So, then I think what we're looking to see is, how many of those 45, oh, yes, how many of those 45 7 through 12 graders would be non-aggressive?
Yep.
How many more kids would that add to? Because if it's only adding 10, I think it's worth our conversation, personally, as a board member. I think-
At least take a look at the kids.
I would at least like that to happen.
Okay.
Go ahead. Dr. Gullett?
Madam Chair, if, if the board would consider, what we need to know today is if the ability to move forward, I would caution the board with specific numbers, because that can change. People move out, they move in, it, it's probably changing as we sit here today. So, what we need to know, if we have consensus from the board for approval of potentially some budgetary items that you would, it would come back to the board, the approval of, of a model such as this, and you would, of course, approve a staffing plan, so-
And an amended contract.
And an amended contract, of course, thank you. And so, that's what we are seeking and needing from the board today. Logistically, we work through the operational pieces and, and looking at the needs of the students, but that would be really helpful if we could get some feedback on that.
Or do we have consensus with all the things that need to come back to us based on what we have received today?
Yes.
I see all heads nodding.
I still have a question.
Okay. Reverend Cummings?
Yes, you, yes, you have my agreement with it. I do have a question. So, if a kid goes to this new site and they get in trouble, where do they go from there?
What we currently do, that happens unfortunately, they, then we, that principal would submit a recommendation for an expulsion, and then we process that, and more than likely, it's an expulsion with services, which means their time is extended. It is still in the same placement, it is very rare that we expel any student without services, that is a rare situation, so it would, we would handle it the same way we currently handle students that are enrolled, are enrolled at SERMI or New Leaf that break another Level III or IV violation while attending one of their sites.
Unless, can I say an unless?
Yes, ma'am.
Perhaps the, the offense on the campus is an egregious-
Yes.
Then their expulsion goes.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
I just want-
Welcome to New Leaf, SERMI.
I wanted that to be clear.
Yes.
Crystal clear.
Sure.
Because we don't need any gray area on those types of things. We'd have to be concise in our messaging of that.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Conrad?
I just have a question, and this is a little bit in the weeds, but it's been part of our ongoing conversation as a board. As we look at starting this new site, we've all talked about the importance of attendance, and with, like, our, our early reentry kids, I know they had a special, I'm sorry, I don't remember the name, their behavior contract. Are those kinds of things, something you're looking at implementing when we start this program? Because we're all on board, but we need for our students and our families to be all on board when they, you know, if they are chosen to be placed in this program. So, I just want to know what your thoughts were on, on kind of those guidelines for students that we're entering?
Yes, I'll be happy to respond to that. When Dr. Alday presented the revisions for the Code of Conduct just recently, one of the revisions is to require a placement completion, completion of a placement, if that makes sense, before a student is returned. Because what we know happens is, as so many of you have already stated, a 45-day placement, a student might be home. And so, what we want to put in place, no matter if it's at our SERMI or New Leaf or our MCPS site, is that they have to participate in our attendance criteria that's set for them, they have to maintain a certain amount of points and so forth before they can return to base. It won't be just a requirement of only 45 days.
Thank you, that's very good news.
And that will happen with our SERMI and our New Leaf placements as well. Both directors, or the director and executive director are in full support of that addition to the plan for next year.
Thank you, Dr. Livinggood. And just coming back to my original comments at the very beginning, it does appear that I am certainly in the minority on the principal conversation. I, I do welcome additional thoughts on that, though. I, I understand the, the concept, I, I mean, we, we've even had the exploration from a board member of, of this school receiving its own code and actually being a school. I, I'm, I would like to see it as a temporary spot, and, and I don't, I, whenever it becomes a school, again, this is all just me, and clearly, I'm in the minority here, but I, I don't want this to be a place that people want to come, honestly, I don't. And what we have to be very careful of is creating such an environment that causes that. And I'll give the best example. While we've been sitting here, I received a, a quick email from a parent, multiple emails, parent that's struggling with academics of a student, and has even asked in an email, would it be better if they were alternatively placed in one of these other options? Because they don't really understand the process, I will respond to that and handle it. But if we create such a positive alternative learning environment, and absolutely it needs to be, but if we create such a positive alternative learning environment, it becomes more like a district charter school, we don't have, but I mean, it becomes something like that in a small school environment where they're getting all this one-on-one attention and they're, and it, it becomes such a positive thing that it, it isn't as temporary as, as we want it to be. We, we want it to be an alternative, certainly, for those students that, and, and maybe it's a coordinator of alternative learning, or a, an executive director, or something, maybe there's just another type. I understand why my fellow board members who are, who are from K-12 education appreciate that principal position, and, and I can understand that, and I'm hearing that, I certainly am in the minority. But again, just wanting to express my thoughts on what my vision is of what this is as a singular board member, is, is a temporary location, and someplace that certainly puts academics first, certainly puts students first, certainly gets them back on track, but does not become a place that people want to be. I mean, for lack of a better term, I mean, I, I just, I want to ensure that we're doing all of the right things, but also making sure that students aren't pulling a fire alarm so they can get to come here. And, and I'm not saying that would happen, but the way we're creating it, there's potential. So, that, those are my thoughts on-
I'm sure.
Yes, sir.
And, and I, I hear what you're saying, and I understand what you're saying completely, I understand what you're saying. And there's a lot of validity of what you're saying in this, however, in, the superintendent and I yesterday had a conversation with a young lady over at Acceleration Academy, and one of the reasons she felt that Acceleration Academy was great for her was because she did not fit in the traditional sense of school. She had been homeless, she had been getting in trouble, she had been all those things, and this was finally a place. So, if this place turns out to be a place, and the principal creates that culture, or the person that's in charge, whatever time you give him, creates that culture, that a kid is going to succeed, why not? Why not? My goal is to see the kids succeed. If, if they're going to succeed at our, if a kid, listen, if a kid's going to succeed at SERMI, if SERMI has given the kid what they need to succeed, if they want to stay there for four years, because that's what they feel is, is comfortable for them and they're doing well, by all means, do it. My goal is just to see the kids succeed. We, of course, we don't want, most kids are going to want to go back to the traditional, but there will be some kids that want to be at those type of environments, because it gives them something that, where they did not fit in. It's like trying to put a, a square peg in a circle, and, and this may be that place, this may be that, that fit for that kid. So, I mean, I don't want us to, I don't want us to, to just not look at that, that consideration. I, I get what you're saying, I understand. I, I felt that way in prison. You have people come, you could have people that would get out of prison, I would, I would put them out on Tuesday, and Friday, they were already on their way back. Why? Because they, they felt that was their comfort zone, that was what they needed, but you may have a kid that would do the same thing, you're correct, that would do some minor offense to get back, because that's where they, they were most productive, most productive. So, I don't want to, I don't want us to just dismiss that, their, the fact, the goal is for them to be productive and successful.
And, and I appreciate that, Reverend Cummings, certainly, I don't know that that's what this model is, is looking at. And so, if this model is looking at the potential of actually being alternative learning environment, where if students are, have already served their time, for lack of a better phrase, but have been so vastly successful in that model, what does that then look like for us? And, and I am grateful that we're having this conversation right on the heels of us attending the ribbon cutting for Acceleration Academy and learning what that is going to look like, and how we started this presentation today, talking about our Ignite kids going there, and all, because we are, as a district, exploring the right- Because we are, as a district, exploring the right options for students and providing them within Marion County Public Schools. What that looks like, whether that's a charter school that another operator is running, or whether that is right here in Marion County Public Schools that we are exploring options, we understand that just as we did post-pandemic, that we had a certain group of students that potentially would have been great in a virtual middle school that we weren't able to actually do at that time. But that is the, that's the kind of forward-thinking exploration of student learning opportunities that I'm grateful that this team is putting forth and that this board is also interested in entertaining. So if we need to put a principal there with the intent that it's possible that that actually does become something beyond a temporary site for students, I'm all for it. So those are my.
I did have one more question. So we're looking at getting this going by August, correct?
Yes, sir.
Is there a cap on the number of students that we're trying to have there? I heard, I keep hearing 80. I keep hearing 80.
We did. We did. I did say 80. But I have listened and I will work with Dr. Gullett and Ms. Talber Irving to revise that concept.
And that wasn't a trick question. That wasn't about you.
Everybody's laughing right now. Dr. Gullett, do you have something to add to that?
I, thank you, Madam Chair. I certainly, again, want to underscore Dr. Livinggood's leadership and, and all of the work that she's been doing. You've heard a lot from her today. And the work is messy, but we're doing the right things for students and will adapt. And, and yes, I didn't want to put Dr. Livinggood on the spot and certainly don't want to ever do that to my team, but I think there's some additional opportunities. Facilities provided that we can do that. We cannot let the potential challenges keep us from doing what's best for students. And I was going to say this till the end, but if I could say this now. I think we're finally on the track where we're looking innovatively, which has been my passion since I've been here, to meet our students where they are, in Marion County, as you, as you just stated. This is, again, a beginning. Just like I said yesterday, I was so excited about Acceleration Academy continuing to seek options and choices. I am too grateful to our partners, Sermi and New Leaf. We cannot do this work alone, but we need to continue to seek options. And that is not always going to be a traditional model for all of our students in Marion County. And we can continue to push forward and do that. We will have better success. Our students will be more equipped with the resources they need to be successful. So I appreciate the willingness, the drive and the commitment and the courage that it's taking. Sorry, thought my allergies would hold up. The courage it's taking to address what the real needs are here and making those decisions for kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett.
I guess I got one more thing. Because I, because I don't want this to come out. I don't want Sermi or New Leaf to think that we're not grateful for everything that they have been doing in our district. You guys have been providing a huge service and are going to continue to provide service to us. So, but I think at this juncture, we're at this place where we got to do more. And this is not, this is not to do less with Sermi or New Leaf. This is just to do more for our students. So I appreciate you guys for what you do all the time. So thank you.
Absolutely. Well said, Reverend Cummings. Absolutely is not just doing less with one. It's absolutely providing more for the students and, and doing all we can to meet our motto, our vision of, of student success. So, Board, if there are no additional comments for Dr. Livinggood, public comment.
She needs some water.
Is there any public comment?
I don't want to keep you all longer than you already.
Come on down.
Welcome, Mr. Nevesnik, where you've been here a long time, so.
Good afternoon, everybody. I didn't think you'd hear that from me. We are in total support. We see kids that come onto our campuses every day that we're like, why? You know, and I know there's a why, and, and I understand there's a why. And so we're in total support of this. We, we have kids that really need our resources. And then we have kids that, we, we started a virtual school, so we had other options for those kids that didn't need to be there every day with some of the other students. So we're in total support. We will help Danielle with anything she needs to get, to get this thing off the ground. We do like the fact, and we used to have criteria to leave our program. Unfortunately, the numbers that were being sent to our program did not allow us to continue that. We had to cut some corners, and anytime you cut corners with, with these kids, it presents its own set of problems. So I'm glad we're going back to not cutting corners, making kids earn it. Because when kids earn something, then they can feel the same power that we feel when we see them walk out the door and we know they're going to be successful. So thank you for all you do. I think this is a great move forward. We'll, we'll be on board with anything to help you and to help the students that we've seen and maybe won't see also get what they need to be successful to. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Is there any additional public comment? Thanks, Mr. Neve for being here as an audience member. We appreciate you, too. Okay, with that, Dr. Livinggood, thank you so much. That wraps up our 5.1 on our agenda.
Thank you all.
Which takes us to board comments and concerns. So I will start with Ms. Martinez Lopez.
Board members, I had sent an email out to you earlier this week, confirmation for your summer FSBA conference. I did receive everyone's confirmation. Reservations have been made today. That will be on the board packet in April for final board approval, and you will receive your packets by the end of May. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez Lopez. Attorney Powers.
Nothing from Legal. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Gullett?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just briefly, again, thank you, Board, for your support of our courage and innovation to help every student succeed.
Absolutely. Dr. James?
I'm excited about the conversations we had today. I think that we're doing really great stuff, and I'm excited for that. I want to bring up something I brought up every time. So I'm going to bring up the superintendent's evaluation and the timeline. So when the, I've brought it up a few times, and I haven't quite felt like it's gotten the support it needed, so I want to just kind of have a conversation about it. The timeline, the chair shared was 16 weeks at our last meeting, but it wasn't. It was 12 weeks, and now we're at nine weeks until we have to meet the deadline per the superintendent's contract. And as we backward plans into that, because the contract says June 1st. So as, I'm sorry.
I just, I wanted to ensure that you received the email that Attorney Powers sent out this week that has the full timeline of exactly what we're doing and when we're getting it done.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not quite in agreement with it, so that's why I'm asking.
Perfect. Just wanted to make sure we were all on the same page.
So we have nine weeks from today to meet the contract deadline. I think that we are meeting with FSBA. I know that we are meeting with FSBA for Master Board Training on Wednesday, the 5th of April. And we're going to, we are going to begin the discussion, as appropriately, about the evaluation tools. I am going to ask, formally ask, that an agenda item be added to the sixth work session or we schedule a special work session to discuss those items publicly, that evaluation tool publicly, as well as the climate culture survey that is sent out for all administrators, for staff to complete on them. So there is a climate culture survey that all staff members at schools are able to complete for assistant principals and principals. Dr. Gullett and I have talked about this for leaders throughout the district. But I think that that could be a very easy tool to duplicate for leaders in our district or staff or all, whatever we, whatever the board talks about, to, to use as a baseline tool, survey for our superintendent. But I do believe that we need opportunity and space to have that discussion publicly outside of the timeline that Attorney Powers sent us. I don't, I don't think that, I don't think it would be productive to assume that the timeline that we were sent absorbs enough space for the robust conversation this board typically has. And I want to ensure that we are respecting the time. So I am asking that either added to the agenda on the 6th, there be an item for superintendent's evaluation tools and the climate culture survey, or we schedule a special work session before the work session on the 20th. That would be an opportunity to have that discussion in space. And then presumably add a Part II discussion to finalize, as was already mentioned in Attorney Powers' email, for the 20th, adding that agenda item for the finalization of that conversation so that we can be best prepared to meet the timeline in her contract. Do any other board members have comment about that?
Dr. James, you've, you've brought this up several times. We haven't dealt with it, Chair. Why don't we just go ahead and deal with this? Let's get, get this done and get it down the road. June 1st is coming. Was it June 1st or July 1st?
It's June 1st.
June 1st. It's coming rapidly. I'm sure the superintendent wants to go ahead and get through with this. And we, we, we got other fish to fry, so let's not, let's put it on the agenda. Let's put it on the agenda for this and be through with it.
I, I agree. I, I think, I think there will be a lot of conversation. I think it's more than what we'll have at our Master Board Training. And so I actually feel a little relieved because I feel like we're going to need more time than that to, because there were so many documents. If we're going to have discussion on each one and try to come up with something that's a good fit for Dr. Gullett in Marion County, I just feel like there'll be a lot of input required.
And I would ask that it, I would ask that it not be, I would ask that we have a special work session, to be honest with you, because it is a lot of information to go through. I, I advise you guys that I wouldn't be at the Master Board Training, but I would definitely want to be in this discussion because we need to get it done and do it right and be through with it. And.
And I, I just want to, Master Board Training is a publicly noticed meeting, but it isn't a meeting we have in this format. And so I.
I'm sorry. I don't want to cut you off. Go ahead. Continue your comments. I'll, I'll let you continue because it's not intended. We're not going to be.
I was not done speaking, so I'm going to finish speaking.
And you're going to get mad at me, but not mad at him when he cut you off, and that's fine. Go ahead.
The Master Board Training is a publicly noticed meeting, but does not happen in this form or fashion. So I think it is appropriate for the tools to be introduced to the board members by the FSBA in that setting, but they be publicly discussed in a format like this. And waiting until the 20th to have that discussion and only have it one singular time and assume that we are going to come to consensus on the 20th is irresponsible, in my opinion, because we have robust discussion regularly. So the Master Board Training should not be a time where we get into deep discourse, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it should not be a time where we get into deep discourse about the tools, their functionality, how we would use them, because it is not, it is not a meeting like this where someone can log in and watch the discussion.
That's correct. Master Board Training is, would be a training element. It would, it would encompass the Florida School Board Association's training on how to develop the tools.
Correct.
The discussion would come at a, at a meeting.
Correct. So I would, whoever, whether it was Cummings or Conrad, who said a special session would be appropriate, I am in full support of that so that we can ensure that we have proper time to discuss it before the 20th and it being added to an agenda item on the 20th. Thank you, Dr. James. For the record, I am going to read the timeline that was proposed since we're going to be discussing altering the timeline. On March 9th, all board members received evaluation tools from other school districts by FSBA Executive Director Andrea Messina. The timeline said, the superintendent would discuss the emailed tools during board briefings with members the week of April 3rd, which is the now proposed week that we potentially have a public conversation. On Master Board Training on April 5th, that will be a training on the topics and the process. There would not be discussion on the instrument itself, not at all, because it's just a training on the process. As has been previously noted, the board has not followed a process that other boards have, and they will be talking us through during Master Board Training on April 5th, how the process needs to move forward. Following the timeline, additional conversation would occur with board members in individual superintendent board briefings the week of April 17th. And then we would have a work session topic on April 20th to settle on a final tool evaluation and metrics. The final evaluation tool would be distributed to board members on May 1st. Board members would complete those individual evaluations and review those evaluations with the superintendent during our briefings the week of May 15th. And the board approval of those evaluations would be calendared and on the board meeting agenda for May 23rd. I understand that there is question for us to have a separate work session entirely about this, and that is completely fine. Here is what I want to express again, as I did publicly before. A climate culture survey from this board member will not be tied to our superintendent's evaluation in 2022, 2023. We do not have a baseline. We have never reviewed the climate culture surveys of any principals ever. I understand they occur, but that's not the board's responsibility. So while they happen, it is a model, certainly, that teachers have the ability to evaluate their principals, but this board has never reviewed those, and those of us who've never completed one don't even know what they look like. So I understand that there potentially is an easy-to-duplicate tool that could be used as a baseline. I do believe that is a separate incident, a separate tool for our communications and community relations team, that we need to have a climate survey on the district, absolutely. But to consider that being something that we need to talk about in tandem with the superintendent's evaluation, I believe is irresponsible because we're not tiring the superintendent's evaluation to a tool that has never been developed before, nor has been distributed, nor has received feedback on. Those are my thoughts.
I'm sure.
Yes, sir.
I'm, you're the chair. You can say what you want to say. I'm just, you just made a statement that I think was very inappropriate. You said that this climate survey would never be, you spoke as one per, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. You just spoke that. You said it would never. That is the decision of the board, if the board decides to attach one. I'm just, I'm just, I want to make that correction because I don't want anyone that's listening to this to say that you singularly made a decision. That's all I'm saying.
And I said, this board member does not believe.
You said, that's not what you said. That's not what you said.
Okay.
Okay.
This board member believes that there is never a time that we should tie a climate and culture survey to our superintendent's evaluation for the 2022, 2023 school year when said instrument had never been established prior to the 2022, 2023 school year. We did have a strategic plan in place. That is what the superintendent's evaluation should be driven by from this board member's perspective. I do singularly believe that a climate survey is incredibly valuable for this district so we can see, and it is something that was proposed in our strategic plan when I sat on Goal 5, Community Relations and Communications, when the strategic plan was established. We do know we need a baseline. It has not been done yet, and that is something that needs to get started. But for this board member to say that we would tie said climate survey to the same conversation as the superintendent's evaluation, I believe is irresponsible because it just would not be an evaluation tool that I would want to see used in the 2022, 2023 superintendent's evaluation. So with that being said, there is a discussion that we need to have a separate work session specifically on the superintendent's evaluation tools that clearly needs to occur before April 20th. I do have other things in my list that we need to talk about, to pull out our calendars. So I don't know if we want to do all that right now or if we want to do that at the end of the board meeting. I'm fine with us scheduling a completely separate work session to discuss nothing but superintendent evaluation. And then we will have on April 20th where we can finalize that discussion. Board, is there additional comments on this?
What day are we looking at?
Okay, if we're pulling out our calendars, I have other dates we need to be looking at as well. April 12th. How does April 12th look for everybody?
Wide open.
Wednesday, April 12th. We should have.
I have something, but I can, I can miss it.
Okay?
We'll make it work.
Wednesday, April 12th. We should have plenty of time to publicly notice a work session for 9:00 a.m. Does that work for everyone?
That's good to me.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. That is our principal's meeting.
Wednesday is?
It is April 12th.
What time is the meeting? Could we have our work session in the afternoon, like a 1:00 meeting or something?
The meeting's at 8:00. It's the first half of the day, and my preference would be, I'd need to be at those meetings.
Absolutely.
So, 1:00?
Good, 1:00.
1:00 on April 12th.
And could I request that we have somebody from Personnel or Human Resources set that as a work session agenda item?
I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry, Attorney Powers.
I'm sorry. Could I request that we have someone from Personnel or Human Resources set that as a work session agenda item? Or, in other words, get it on the calendar. Unless, that's something, Ms. Martinez-Lopez, I don't know if it's going to require anything additional beyond just calendaring it as a work session.
Is there an interest in having someone from the Florida School Board Association here as well for that day, or are we good with just the five of us plus the superintendent having the conversation?
That's a work session, right?
It is a work session, I'm just asking if we would like to have Florida School Board Association present.
What I would like to ask, and I don't know who the best person is this, but after our April 5th discussion and master board training, whatever items we decide, evaluation tools that we review with our FSBA individuals, be added to the agenda items and posted publicly. I think that placeholders should be put for, for evaluation tool types, so that we can, those, those types that we have discussed can be added to the publicly noticed meeting. And then I would ask that the survey that is currently being used for Assistant Principals and Principals, whatever that template is, be also added to that meeting, so it can be discussed and reviewed in that meeting, whether we use it or not, whatever consensus we come to, that would be a time and a place to be able to review that item for the meeting and have a public discussion about that particular tool.
So, I want to stress again, our master board training will not have conversation about an evaluation tool. It will not. That's, it's a publicly noticed meeting, but it is not a public conversation about the evaluation tool. That's what the timeline, original timeline, was set, for us to have our individual conversations with the superintendent, in our board briefings with her individually, talking about elements that we liked about it, having that one-on-one conversation with her, because this is, she's intimately involved in this process. We would have those one-on-one conversations with her as to what our thoughts were, what we liked, what we didn't like, not that she's polling us in any way, but just that she's sharing our individual feedback in a one-to-one conversation. We would have master board training on April 5th to then talk us through the process, not at all talking about any questions to be included in the evaluation, because that would be something that needs to be in a public meeting. I hear, Dr. James, that potentially we need to have this as an agenda item on our April 6th work session. If the board feels we need to have some kind of public conversation about it at that point, apart from the new meeting that we've just scheduled, that is open for discussion. But, our April 5th works, board, master board, April 5th master board training will not include conversation about the specifics of the superintendent's evaluation tool.
So, then I will adjust my statement to say, the superintendent, one-on-one discussions, we inform the superintendent, or we come to consensus about what agenda, what tools we would like to see added to the agenda item, but what I'm stressing here is that whatever the tools that we want to discuss should be added as attachments to that publicly noticed meeting.
April 12th?
To the April 12th meeting.
Absolutely.
Yes. So, whatever form or fashion we communicate that to Dr. Gullett, or Ms. Martinez-Lopez, or whoever the appropriate person is, those items, those tools should be added to the agenda, so that they are publicly noticed for the public to review.
So, this is where I want to ask Attorney Powers' opinion on this. Because each board member potentially has specific, here's what I don't want to have happen, because we received all of these different evaluation tools from other school districts. I'm assuming that those are all publicly noticed and all of those are out there, but how can we individually say, "Board Member Campbell, these are my recommendations," can we put that in the attachment? And then, "Board Member Conrad, here are her recommendations," that can be an attachment. Can we do it that way to get us to an April 6th deadline for April 12th?
Yes, however, that's going to be quite a bit to manage, and that's why, as I said, we probably need someone from HR or Personnel that is going to be a touchstone point to be able to get all that stuff uploaded. That is the result of the conversations you individually have, as long as there's not discussion between you or among you, and a decision is not made collectively with the superintendent, and of course, this doesn't happen, you know, the superintendent, with the superintendent then polling, then that, that would be sufficient. But there will need to be a person who's going to, or a department who's going to be making sure that those things are placed on the agenda in whatever form you choose to have them. Now, there is, there is no requirement that, that tools from, from other board docs and things like that, from other districts, be posted just for you to consider it in advance. That can be something that is, that, however, even though it doesn't have to be posted in advance, that's about the only way that, that board members can see everything there. The board members can see what everyone else is looking at, is to share it immediately with the public. I would strongly warn and encourage board members not to include any commentary of your own, simply provide whatever document you wish to reference.
So, question, Madam Chair, Attorney Powers, we don't have to upload any documents. We're having a work session, we can bring those documents to that work session on April 12th, and then put them on record then at that work session, correct?
Well, the way that we put something on the record is to post it to board docs.
I mean, if we put it on April 12th, we know we're coming back to another work session to discuss this. That way, it would have been on record for the second work session for this discussion.
Yes, that's accurate, but any, keeping in mind that anything that you're going to discuss, the only way to share it with the public is through your discussion and you're providing it on board docs now or at a future date.
Got you.
So...
And I think our time would be better spent if we could all prepare and review what each other has brought forth. I mean, if, if the first time I'm seeing what Vice Chair Thrower is interested in using is at that day, I'm going to need to spend some time consuming presumably the tool that she thinks is best, and so, to be better prepared for the meeting, it would be most appropriate that they were on the agenda prior to the meeting, so that we could review them and be more productive.
So, the question therein lies, do we want to have this as an agenda item on April 6th, where that conversation can occur, and we bring that information publicly, and then have a work session specifically about this on April 12th, and then finalize the tool on April 20th? Or, do we want to pursue the idea of putting all of the tools that everyone has, you know, every other district uses, out in our own public board docs for reference? I understand the point of trying to put something out for the public to see prior to the work session, I understand the value of that. However, I, I am concerned about us not bringing all of that up in a public meeting. So, short of what my original question was, that each individual board member identifies specific elements that they would like to see included, and we submit our own, whatever that might look like, by April 6th, that then is uploaded by Ms. Martinez-Lopez to board docs for the April 12th work session. I, I mean, I think that that is an option for us, if the board so chooses. Ms. Conrad?
Chair, just a suggestion that maybe streamline this a little bit, and I hope I'm not oversimplifying, but as we, as we meet individually with Dr. Gullett, so I have an instrument that I prefer, you have an instrument that you prefer, but maybe Nancy and I have the same one. So, at the conclusion of our briefings, say there's three documents that, those are, we only choose three out of the seven or whatever, then you would only have to upload the ones that we are looking at. I think it would be less confusing also to the community. If during our first briefing, we narrow down what tools we're interested in using and then move forward with the discussion from there.
Thank you for that, Ms. Conrad. I think the only way that that would work is if we had our board briefings with Dr. Gullett the week of April 3rd, and then in the work session on April 6th, that we individually, in our board comments, express the specific tools that, or questions or what have you in that April 6th work session, that we say publicly what we chose, and then that, we can then type them up, send them to Ms. Martinez-Lopez, and it becomes a part of the April 12th work session, public documents. But I, I would be careful of Dr. Gullett taking all of our feedback and then saying, "Okay, well, you chose Hillsborough, and you chose St. Lucy, and all of you agreed to all..." No, I don't, I don't want, that would be polling, and we have to be very careful of that. So, I think that it's possible, though, that in the April 6th work session, that after we've had conversation with Dr. Gullett about the things that we specifically like and don't like about the tools that we've seen, and what we might want to bring forth, that during April 6th, that we, in our board comments perhaps, and we may actually make additional commentary like we're doing right now, that may last longer than five minutes, where we talk about individual items, knowing that we will have a set work session on April 12th, and if we as individual board members wanted to have something specific out to the public, uploaded for the April 12th work session, we could do so in writing and have it to Ms. Martinez-Lopez that afternoon.
And to be clear for future board docs reference, that these are not documents necessarily that have been generated by us or this board, I might advise that they be labeled something like model code, and then if it's, you know, Hernando or whatever it is, some other sort of thing like that when it's uploaded, so that it's clear that these are all things that are being provided to the board, like a PowerPoint presentation would, for clarity and for perhaps for elucidation later, but that it's not, it's not a document that's generated by us.
Right. Which it's possible that we may say, "I like question two from this school board, and I like question five from that one." And so, my vision, a singular board member, and that's what we have to have this conversation, is that following our conversation on the April 6th work session, while we're all bringing it up, that we then create some kind of document individually as board members, that we then submit to Ms. Martinez-Lopez. If we needed to have a template, I'm sure we could get somebody to create us a little template like we had with the PDFs that all the charter schools use today. We want to have something that it all at least looks the same and uniform, that we then say, "These are the things that I believe individual board member should be included in the superintendent's evaluation," and then that becomes a part of the record for the April 12th work session, but that's open for discussion. Do you all agree with that thought process?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just for clarification, are we saying we'll have one work session on the 6th, and then another one on the 12th? Is that what we're...
Do we not already have a work session on the 6th?
Yes, and to put it as an agenda item, excuse me.
Well, right now, we're talking about just bringing up our feedback during board comments, so that's where we're, we're having that dialogue. Dr. Gullett?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm looking at the timeline that was proposed, and master board, April 5th for training on the process, so my question is, what's the purpose of that? Isn't, I thought that that proposal was to let Florida School Board work through what the process should be, so I'm just questioning if that's changed.
I mean, to talk through the process as far as how this needs to be done on an annual basis and that kind of thing, we certainly were not intending to do any polling or come to consensus on questions or anything like that during that time. We just wanted to allow some space with FSBA to talk us through how other districts do it, things that we potentially are not aware of.
Okay. And I thought that included creating the document, how to share the document, how to come to, probably other districts have worked through that, but that may be my misunderstanding.
I, I think that we have adjusted the timeline.
Okay.
If that was going to be a part of that conversation that day, I think that the timeline right now is being adjusted to accommodate additional needs and requests.
Madam Chair, just for clarity, for the special work session on the 12th, if there are any documents that all of you are putting together and sending to me, I need to have them no later than the 5th at noon.
Which is impossible.
And, and I can say, based on a memorandum of law that I had circulated to previous board members, and I'll recirculate it again, with permission of board chair, documents can be uploaded to a work session agenda within any reasonable time, up, really up to the day before. It would, their documents have to be uploaded within, by the seventh, by seven days prior, or it requires specific permission of the board chair. So, if the board chair agrees that, you know, after the 5th, that going up to the 11th or something, that it's posted there, as long as it's done so and then every board member is notified of it, that's, that's acceptable.
Okay. Board, how do you feel about the plan? Vice Chair?
Here's my thought. In, in all of our roles within the school system, maybe outside work that we've done, most of us have probably done an evaluation on someone at one point or another, but that's different than what we're talking about here. I've never done a, an evaluation, a thoughtful evaluation, I'm thinking back about where we were as a district when Dr. Gullett was hired. You know, we, we did the best we could for the times that we were in. Now, I feel like what I'm hearing from everyone is that we want to come up with a good, solid, professional evaluation, a logical timeline, and we need to, I'll just say it for myself, I want more background knowledge about how this is supposed to look, potential pratfalls that we want to avoid, maintaining the public transparency, honoring how we treat our superintendent and also how we treat each other. So, I would propose that we have the master board training with FSBA. They've done hundreds of these. We pay a lot of money to be members of FSBA, and I expect them to have expertise to share with us, because this conversation, I feel like, is just devolving. So, I would really like to get it back to something along the lines of the original timeline that was proposed. I think that we definitely need to start with FSBA, we need to start with master board training, so we can get, so I can get more clarity on how to navigate through this, you know? It's a very important, critical element of, of what we do, and we're trying to make decisions at 1:29 in the afternoon, after sitting here since 9:00 in the morning. I'm not sure that this is really the appropriate time to continue this conversation.
Concur.
So, maybe we need to chunk it, you know, break it down into chunks, and look at the timeline that was proposed, and...
That appropriately adjusted.
Well, and I think more, even to your point, Board Member Thrower, it's important than that we get something on the schedule as a placeholder, like the 12th, so that we have designated time and space to have this conversation where we are not at the end of an agenda, and then, because we didn't finish the work today until almost 1:00, and then trying to slide something else onto an agenda to have a discussion. So, I think a special work session with respect to time and space to have the conversation like we have set for the 1:00 PM on the 12th is most appropriate, so that we don't, we can have a fresh discussion after learning about the process from FSBA on the 5th.
I would agree on those two statements, and that's as far as I'm prepared to go today.
Okay. April 12th, please publicly notice a work session at 1:00 PM for superintendent evaluation conversation. Beyond that, the timeline will stay as was read into the record. We will have master board training on April 5th, and I will ensure they are aware of, well, they are already aware of the conversation that they will be having with us about the process.
That concludes my comment.
That concludes my comments. Thank you. Reverend Cummings?
No comments.
Ms. Conrad?
Just really quick, I really got a little antsy when Ms. Boston Ellis got up, because she was here the whole meeting, but I just really wanted, my primary elementary education side came out, I just really wanted to give a big cheer and shout-out for the work that she and her team do, to keep this ship sailing in the right direction. You know, every time she comes up and, and shares, and, and just shares things with us, you, you can always count on her, you know? So I'm just, I'm extremely grateful for the work that she does, and the team that she rallies, and the quality work that they do, and just also all the presentations that we had today. There was just so much information, and it's exciting. I feel this is one of the first meetings that I've been a part of, where we really can start seeing the wheels moving forward, changes being made. And so I'm really excited and hopeful, and looking forward to the upcoming school year and the changes that are going to be made. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Conrad. Vice Chair Thrower?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you all, as always. It is, continues to be a pleasure to, to work with a board of very passionate, very committed, very knowledgeable people, and, and to be surrounded by, by staff and superintendent that just want nothing more than to see every student succeed. So, let's do it.
Thank you, Vice Chair. The only other comments that I wanted to make, I was going to talk about the timeline for the superintendent's evaluation. Then I wanted to mention again that next Wednesday is Marion County Day in Tallahassee. It is my intention to drive up and drive back. I wanted to see if any of my fellow board members are intending to do the same, just for curiosity's sake more than anything. Jessica Janis-Witt is scheduling some meetings. Mr. Smallridge is going up, for sure, and I think there are a few additional team members from the district that are going, but is there any other board member who intends to go to Tallahassee next Wednesday?
I'll, I'll be in Tallahassee next week, not for Marion County Days. Our fraternity is on, on the Hill, so I'll be up there for the three, three days next week, so--
Okay. So if you're there on Wednesday, then we'll maybe see you there?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll make sure every board member is aware of the meeting times that Jessica's setting up, but is there anybody else who is planning to?
Yes, I'm planning to go.
Okay. Perfect.
Sadly, I'm not available.
Okay. Okay. So there will at least be two, potentially three of us from the board that can attend those meetings, and we will proceed with that. I was going to pursue potentially us changing our master board training date, because Reverend Cummings will not be able to be there, but I think based on the conversation we just had, we're going to have it. So we'll work on a way you can zoom in, or something, Reverend Cummings, for that master board training. And the last thing is if we wanted to get our calendars out and schedule the final master board training that we need, April is available, the dates of June 12th through the 23rd. So I don't know if we want to go ahead and work on scheduling something in the month of June, but that would be our final session to have with them.
Can we come back and do that one, please?
Okay. All right. I will bring that up in Tuesday's board meeting--
Okay.
--so we can talk about it in Tuesday's board meeting, so please be prepared with your calendars to talk about June 12th through the 23rd dates that would work for you for the final master board training. And with that, I am grateful for the robust and passionate discussion that we have had today, and the vision that we have set before us, that our superintendent has brought to this district. It is definitely with vision and expertise that we are where we are, and where we're going to continue to go. So with that, I will adjourn the meeting at 1:35 p.m.